Meeting is in order. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Director.
Mr. Siriyo.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Flanagan.
Here.
And Mr. Fitzsimmons.
The President. Any comments on the agenda?
Will we approve this, President?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is unanimously approved. Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not on the agenda. We are having a public hearing, but this is the opportunity for anybody present to speak on a subject that's not on the agenda. That means not the subject of the public hearing today. Anybody have any comments? Says nobody approaches the podium. No comments. Is there any unfinished business from our last meeting, Mr. Director?
No, sir. No unfinished business.
Okay, we move to new business. Today's, we have scheduled a public hearing on the rezoning of parcels to industrial District M2 with proffers. And just to quickly preview the format of the public hearing, this is a public hearing to allow the commission to gather information from interested citizens on the agenda items. Citizens may speak in reference to each item on the agenda for a time usually limited to three minutes. Commissioners and staff may ask questions of anyone attending the meeting, the hearing. Speakers are asked not to direct questions or comments to each other. Speakers are not allowed additional time for rebuttal. This is a hearing, not an event, not a debate, so we're not here to discuss and deliberate, but to, we wish to benefit from the information you have to provide to us, and that's the purpose of the hearing. Questions may be directed to commissioners and community development staff during office hours. And we've had an unusual amount of public engagement on this subject, on this item in the lead up to this meeting, and I wanted to make a couple of quick remarks before we settle down. The rationale, the purpose of the remarks is to respond to the relatively high outreach engagement that we've had. It's a sign of a healthy community that we have that engagement. I'm grateful to those who have been involved, and we want, I think, we'd like to acknowledge that engagement. And thank you for coming and being willing to speak. I'd also like to just briefly improve the transparency of the procedure in our deliberations. The department staff are professionals, they eat, breathe, drink, this stuff, it's all natural to them. The applicant and his representative are likewise deal with this material on a regular basis, and they know it very well. The commissioners have specialized training and lengthy experience in dealing with applications, but to the members of the public, I think sometimes our deliberations, our procedures can seem arcane. And because of the level of interest in this subject, it seems to me to be worth taking three or four minutes just to introduce the, give you an overview of where we're going to go today. So, as the director will explain in more detail briefly in a few minutes, this is a rezoning application, application to rezone certain tracts from R2 residential medium density to M2 industrial. The owner is the applicant. The tracts together involve, cover about 116 acres, a little bit more, and it's attached to a conceptual plan for data center construction operation, about 2 million square feet. I think it's about 72 feet high, height, 72 feet high?
70 feet, I believe.
70 feet in height plus equipment atop that. And it's a resounding conditional upon proffered actions, conditions offered by the, proffered by the owner, binding successor owners, attached to the rezoned parcel. The main stakeholders are the town as a whole, and there, we can speak of a couple of different perspectives, the town government perspective, which is thinking about the, comprises the elected officials, the town council members, board members such as ourselves, department members. It also comprises all of you, the town residents, and I mean, not just you here in this room, but the population back in 2010, I think, was about 18,000. I don't know what it is now, it must be well over 20,000. So, the, by the town, I mean, the whole town, those in the room and those not present. The county are not direct stakeholders in this meeting. We, we want to cooperate and coordinate with them, but they have their own government apparatus, and we cannot drive in their lane, so to speak. The commission action here is a majority of vote, by majority of vote, either to recommend approval of this rezoning application or recommend rejection. Our authority, yes, Mr. Siriyo?
Recommendation to the town council, whether we make approval or rejection.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Recommend approval, that the town council, our action is by a majority of vote, either to recommend approval to the town council of the rezoning application or recommend rejection. The town council has the final say on applications of this nature. Our authority derives from the Article 10 of the Federal Constitution, Title 15, II, from the Code of Virginia, Culpeper Municipal Code, Chapters 22 and 27. The scope of our competence in this meeting is advisory. Some actions we have, the commission play, this body plays an advisory role, some it plays a ministerial role. Site plan, for example, is a ministerial decision, once we approve a site plan, it's done. This hearing is an advisory mattering. That is, we give advice to the legislative body, to the town council. Our responsibility is, the overarching goal is to promote town health, safety, welfare, and convenience, and that's a very large scale sort of concept. And the way it's broken down and operationalized into real world objectives is through the comprehensive plan, which we revise every five years. The statute, the state statute governing our activity says that we must, this, this body must approve general approximate location, character, and extent of development projects as being substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan. There's some limitations on our discretion, we're not supposed to compete with state regulatory agents, agencies, their authority is superior to ours, and not to try to regulate in the areas of their competence. We're also not to make arbitrary or capricious decisions. That is, our decisions, our findings have to be based on supported fact, unsupported fact and supported evidence, and on the guidelines and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The commission review process is to assess information, the application and related information vis a vis the CP, the comprehensive plan objectives, together with the related strategies and guidelines. We take in information from the applicant, from the department, from the public in general, and any other source of fact or expertise that's relevant. Information, as I said, must be supported by evidence, not by rumor, not by hearsay. I mean, this isn't a court of law, but it should be a solid basis for, for information that's provided. And a key point here is that we have to, that our job is to balance benefits and concessions. The goal of community wealth, health, safety, and welfare and convenience is, broken down in the comprehensive plan, comprises about 24 objectives, and they have to be balanced together. If you pursue commercial development at the expense of every other consideration, you have an imbalanced community. So, this is a bit of a balancing act in which we're trying to come at an overall decision that in, in aggregate best serves the interests of the community. That balance can vary from case to case. In this process, in the instant application, the application we're considering today, so far, we've had two meetings with the applicant, together with the department, right, with the department. We met with them briefly on April 27th, when the concept was introduced, and we had a two hour meeting at the end of July a few weeks ago, which we went through the package in some detail. And the time we spend with the applicant is not meant to favor the applicant in any way, but it's a fairly nuanced, detailed application, and we need that time to absorb the details and do, deal with it in a just, fair, and appropriate way. Once we make our recommendation, the town council has two choices, they may accept our application, they may reject our recommendation and overrule us. Entirely their prerogative to do, to choose either of those courses. Subsequent to rezoning, specific, the specific development of the site does not take place until a plan has been formulated that conforms with state and local regulatory protections prior to the final site plan review by this committee. And what's important to understand about that is there are, the preparation for the site plan review involves, is where much of the state and community regulatory protective framework comes into play. So, the Department of Environmental Quality reviews the site plan at the applicant's development plan at that time, soil and water, reviews it. There are a series of very specific, careful technical reviews that take place at that stage that are not part of this review, of the rezoning review. The rezoning review is, doesn't make sense according to the objective of the comprehensive plan. In the case we're looking at now, in February, this commission recommended approval of a, of a somewhat similar plan, rezoning application that was presented by the town of Culpeper, not by an applicant, but by the town of Culpeper, to rezone some tracts to the south and east of the tracts that we're looking at today. The balance of benefits and concessions we weighed as being favorable to location, the pre-existing, it was close to pre-existing M2 industrially, excuse me, tracts that had already been zoned as M2, and it's in a far southeast corner of the town. The copper ridge, this application is parallel in many ways, both are in the, the identified designated technology zone, the technology zone as thus designated by the town council December 22nd of last year. Its location is different, and so it may evidently presents a different balance of benefits and concessions, and it's that balance that we're addressing in this series of meetings to try to understand. As I've noted, there is, I've been on the commission for eight years, this is the most public engagement I've seen, bar one other episode, and we've received a lot of letters, at least, I've received at least 35. I've read them all, I've read most of them twice, and some of them three times. And we're going to hear from you today. So, again, we appreciate that input, and we take it seriously, even if we, in some cases, we disagree, or there's evidence countering that that's presented, we appreciate public, members of the public who's to step up and take the trouble to present those concerns. So, what we will have for this hearing is the department presentation of the facts. The applicant will make a presentation of his application, this project, and the conceptual plan attached to it. We'll have the public hearing. And after concerns are presented by the public, it's conventional that the applicant have a chance to respond on a factual basis to some of the concerns, on a factual basis. And then we'll have a period of commission deliberation. As noted in the preamble, commissioners may direct questions to the department, to the applicant, and to members of the public, speaking before the commission, pretty much at any time, but it's not really appropriate to have a back and forth, or either amongst yourselves or between the commission and our appearing members of the public. So, with that, I think I've spoken at too great length already, but as I said, I think it's warranted in the circumstances of this hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and keep it fairly brief, as it has been viewed by the commission twice already. So, this is rezoning for the, within the technology zone, rezoning 3957, 2023 of two parcels, 41103 and 41104. The applicant has provided a conceptual layout, as shown on the screen. I want to zoom in just so you can see a little bit closer. Their conceptual layout includes six buildings, one of them proposed at 480,000 square feet, two of them at 380,000 square feet, and three at 250,000 square feet, for a total of just under 2 million square feet. There is flexibility in this, they could go as high as 2.2 million square feet, so they do have some ability to vary the sizes of the individual buildings. The primary access for this proposal would be off of McDevitt Drive with an emergency access off of East Chandler, that East Chandler access would also be proposed to serve the electrical substation on the site. They have not proffered specific distances, but there were significant concerns raised about the proximity to both the residential development and to the National Cemetery, and so, working from the conceptual plan and from their cross sections, it's estimated that the closest distance between any of their buildings and a residence, being those at the end of Kingsburg Drive, is approximately 450 feet. The closest distance between any of their buildings and the National Cemetery property, it would be their maintenance yard area, is approximately 475 feet. And the closest distance between any of the buildings and a burial location at the, on the National Cemetery property is approximately 900 feet. So, the existing zoning of this property is R2, which is a residential designation, and the proposal is to go to M2, the industrial designation. As you can see, the property to the south with that darker purple is the M2 industrial designation. The light purple that's seen around there is the M1, the light industrial zoning designation. The yellow one lands that are shown are various residentially zoned properties. So, looking to consider this application against the town's comprehensive plan, the first section that we looked at were the character areas within the plan. This particular area is identified for mixed use business, which has the purpose of looking to discourage single building developments, looking to encourage walkable village or town center developments with, ideally with walkable blocks, as well as, there's a proposal to identify ways for the town to support new development. It's clear that this application does not meet that, that description. What would be more appropriate is the industrial character area, which talks about large land areas for industrial complexes and providing necessary buffering or transitions to adjoining land uses. When the comprehensive plan update was, was done in 2018, there was no concept of new industrial areas identified in terms of the comprehensive plan's character areas proposal. The only industrial areas that were identified were the existing ones within the town at that time. Looking at the other sections, when we look at the future land use and economic development sections, for future land use, this is identified for employment center land use, which is to utilize existing available high tech infrastructure. It does include industrial development, and specifically calls out M2, the industrial zoning, as an appropriate zoning within this land use designation. It's more specifically identified as growth area three within the plan, which is identified for industrial and business development. There was some notes in there for consideration of mix of employment and residential that may have been a nod to the, the rezoning that took place on this site previously, which was for age restricted residential development. Looking at the economic development section of the plan, there is guidance to work to enhance the marketability, marketability of the sites, as well as to offer incentives to attract new development, and that language particularly relevant when we look at this in a moment, in terms of the technology zone. The transportation and public, transportation, public facilities and natural resources sections of the plans currently show minor collector roads. Those minor collector roads that run through the site would be very unlikely to ever be constructed due to some existing constraints, the topography of the site. They show connections coming off of East, coming off of Route 3, Germana Highway there, which have extremely steep slopes that would be very unlikely and very difficult to, to construct a road that was safe to traverse. But more recently, and more, more importantly, the prior rezoning that occurred on the parcels to the south essentially negated the ability for those roads running through this property to be constructed, as the conceptual development plan that was approved with that would not facilitate the construction of those roads. On the subject of natural resources, this plan does propose some protection of wetlands on the site itself, as well as protection of natural resources and open space areas through the, the contribution of cash proffers to the town specifically for those purposes. As mentioned earlier, there is the technologies zone in place, this was adopted by the town at the end of 2022. It is a, an incentive, a series of incentive grants related to various taxes for real estate machinery and tools, site plan review permit fees, as well as business personal property taxes on the property shown in, in sort of the turquoise on the screen, which does include the two properties here. That proposal did include a 100 foot buffer off of the National Cemetery property. This proposal does, does include that and more, essentially in terms of what they are proposing. But that, as I said, gave clear indication from town council at the end of last year as far as what they thought was an appropriate land use within this area. So, I wanted to quickly summarize the proffers that are associated with this, with this application. These are essentially contributions that the applicant is proposing to make to the town, or commitments that the applicant is proposing to make to the town to mitigate their impacts on adjoining properties. So, they have committed to general conformance with the conceptual zoning development plan that they have submitted, which shows the location, size, and infrastructure of the project. They've set a, a cap of 2.2 million square feet of constructed building space. They have proposed setbacks in excess of the M2 zoning requirements, they varied along the different fronts. They have provided a commitment to architectural features on the buildings themselves. They have committed to screening the rooftop mechanical equipment from East Chandler Street and the National Cemetery, proposed a prohibition on certain types of fencing for security fencing, those that are typically considered more unsightly, such as barbed wire and vinyl fencing. They've committed to enhanced vegetated buffering and landscaping, including using the evergreen, a variety of evergreen trees along East Chandler Street, the National Cemetery, as well as the Norfolk Southern Railroad line. As you saw from the earlier map, there are residentially zoned properties across the railroad tracks from this location. They have committed to the installation of those trees and the vegetated buffer in the very first phase of the project development. So, as they build out, the trees will have the best opportunity to reach their full height and full maturation by the time the, the later phases of the development come along. They have committed to provide a noise study with the first site plan to demonstrate the appropriateness of the various mitigations proposed. This has been a, a topic of conversation between the applicant and the town. There was talk initially of, of providing an upfront noise study, but it's not felt that that would be appropriate, simply because there's not enough detail known at this time as far as final grades, final locations of equipment, as well as what type of cooling mechanisms might be in place on the facilities themselves, which have different implications from a noise perspective. With this proposal, the applicant would be required, once they had essentially the final details of what they were proposing to construct, to provide the study at that time, and that study would be required to demonstrate how they were mitigating their noise impacts on adjoining properties.
Would that be part of the site plan?
That would be part of the site plan. That's, the commitment is to submit it in conjunction with that initial site plan. They have also committed to noise standards equal to or in excess of those that are found in, in surrounding localities that have objective noise standards. They have also proposed cash contributions of $50,000 to the town for public trail improvements, 23 cents per square foot to the volunteer fire and rescue station, 50,000 to the town for the protection of trees and open spaces, and $100,000 to the community college for scholarships specific to Culpeper County residents, Culpeper County, including the town, for IT related training and education. So, in summary, when we look at this against the comprehensive plan, it's clear that the strengths of this would be that the development would help the town's tax base. There is support in the future land use and economic development sections, but it does certainly have that conflict with the mixed use business character area designation within the plan. Be happy to take any questions the commission may have at this time, or certainly be available for questions later on.
You, was it the character, district character, or was it the growth three section that talked about mix of residential and business development in this area?
That was growth area three, I believe.
Yeah, and you said you thought, you, you said that might be a nod to the pre-existing zoning that was based on a, a concept plan to develop, I think, a 55 plus.
Correct. Both, both this property and the property to the south that was previously rezoned earlier this year did have conceptual plans and rezonings that they had gone through, or the one to the south was not rezoning, but they had conceptual plans from the mid 2000 that included residential development.
When you say that might be a nod, is that just sort of a conjecture, or is there actual, a record that says that was?
That's conjecture.
But that land has been, had been zoned R2 for quite some time without development going forward?
The, the two parcels in question here, I believe, were rezoned in 2006 with, to a proposal for approximately 500 units of age restricted development.
So, 17 years, and nobody has figured out how to develop that land as a residential.
So, when looking at this in comparison to, to the rezoning proposal that was considered previously, the proffers and the mitigation that are proposed with this one are objectively higher and, and sort of more significant than what went through with that rezoning. That's wholly appropriate, given the location of this property and proximity to the National Cemetery and to the residential development, and so it'll be up to the, the commission and ultimately the town council to, to determine if those are appropriate as far as mitigating those impacts, but, but they are significantly more than, than the prior rezoning.
The department?
No questions.
With respect to the noise section of the proffer, I compared it to the Chapter 13 sound ordinance, and it seems to me that the proffer extended, the, the noise ordinance says, subject to the, the standard of noise level, that the noise could be generated between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, I think, Monday through Saturday, with Sundays 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the proffer extends that, how, the proffer however, says 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day of the week, so it actually proffers beyond, it proffers to a standard in some way, the sound standard is better than our, is, is a higher standard than our town noise ordinance, but the standard for a length of time during which the sound, the noise may be generated is longer than the town ordinance, is that correct?
It's a difficult one to answer, it's not an apples to apples comparison. Chapter 13 is a separate chapter, chapter than the town zoning ordinance, that's the town's noise ordinance. So, the proffers in this case that they're proposing for their noise mitigation cannot supersede those standards in, in, in Chapter 13 and the town's noise ordinance. So, the town's noise ordinance would apply at all times to this property. What they have proposed are objective standards that are very stringent, and the objective numbers that I talked about with the surrounding localities, Culpeper County, Eric, the town of Culpeper's noise ordinance does not have those objective numbers in it in Chapter 13. We have some numbers in, in Chapter 27 related specifically to the heavy industrial, the M2 district, that these supersede along with those of Culpeper County and those other jurisdictions.
One more detail on the noise section of the proffer. There, there are a series of exceptions circumstance in which the noise controls are, can be disregarded, and they include fire and rescue, construction. They also include emergency power generation, backup powers required. And one of the, in the correspondence, one of the issues that's raised is that it's specifically that the running up, in some cases... issues that's raised is that it's specifically, um, that, uh, the running of, in some cases at least, large diesels to generate electricity when there's an interruption in the regular supply. That is a source of noxious, uh, of disruptive noise and possibly other, um, outputs as well. Um, so according to, I didn't have a chance to check back on, uh, our sound ordinance, but is there, is, does the, are we protect, are, is that exemption in our municipal code as well?
No, it is not. They would not be exempt from the town's noise ordinance, the, the, the measures found in chapter thirteen, which essentially states that industrial, uh, uses, industrial equipment, um, the noise emitting from those, um, should not be able to be heard inside a building, inside a residence.
So notwithstanding its appearance in the proffer, it's basically void, is basically has no effect?
Correct. They still need to meet the, the requirements of chapter thirteen at all times.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Uh, Mr. Hopwell, um, in the proffer, it talks about, um, response to a complaint, uh, and given where to a noise, uh, on the property, something that exceeds the, the limits that are set there. Can you walk us through how that happens in a complaint-based system that we're in right now?
Mm-hmm.
That I just want to understand an a- a, the application of the verbiage there.
Really, that, that's codifying the current practice of zoning enforcement within the town. Um, unless there are instances of, of health and safety, um, concerns, the town does not proactively enforce the zoning. Um, we are responsive to complaints that come in. Um, and so this would be essentially what this proffer is codifying, is that we would go out and investigate the noise levels if there were a complaint issued by an adjoining property owner.
So an adjoining property owner would, would start the complaint, so one of the properties. Does that also count if they're across the street, or is it on the lot line?
Uh, the, the sound measurement and the standards are at the lot line. The, the, the abe- um, the ability of someone to file a complaint is, is not limited.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the department?
I have one following up with, with that. Have we, um, with our generators that are currently over on Electric Avenue, houses literally backing right up to them, have we had complaints from any of, from that neighborhood about noise when those generators are running that you're aware of?
I- in my time, we have not. I, I did have a chance to speak with someone who lives on Kings Brook, and he indicated that they do hear them on occasion when they, when they fire up. They also hear noises coming from the Bingham and Taylor plant as well on occasion. Um, so there are, there are noises that are heard in that area, but, but we, to the best of my knowledge, at least during the, the, my tenure here, we have not received any complaints related to those.
Also, there are other ways to produce, uh, energy without using a diesel, which is probably the loudest. You can use a gas turbine, which is very quiet and probably more efficient. Um, because they don't have to use diesels as a backup.
There's not, um, I don't, I don't claim to be an expert on, on what the, uh, what their options are in terms of those generators. Um, I think that they're gonna follow the market conditions and what makes the most sense for them.
I understand.
Should we proceed to the applicant's, uh, if the commission wishes?
Um, let's proceed to the applicant's presentation. Nice to see you again. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, prior to the applicant's presentation, we, we need to open the public hearing so they can speak. Is that a member of the public?
Uh, okay. Point of order. Um, we'll proceed to the public hearing. Public hearing is open.
Why do we have an applicant up if we have a public hearing?
Because the applicant is a member of the public.
Oh, gotcha.
He'll speak first, and we'll proceed to the other members.
Gotcha.
Uh, as you approach, uh, each of you, as you approach the podium, please introduce yourselves, state your name and where you live for, for the record. Oh, uh, also, if you haven't already, before you speak, please, uh, 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 sign in on the sign-in sheet just in front of the door, um, there. Doesn't affect the order of your speaking, but for the record, we maintain a record, uh, for public, uh, review, and everybody who speaks their name and, uh, uh, not the full address, but where they're from should be, uh, stated.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, Stephen Plesko for the applicant. I'm a Culpeper County resident. Um, and we're pleased to be here tonight to talk about our Copper Ridge Data Center campus proposal. Thought I'd start out first, uh, and appreciate the presentation by Mr. Hopwell, very thorough, and, and it gives you a good background of, you know, the site and the process that we've been going through. And as he stated, um, the data campus that was recently approved just to our south, um, has gone through a similar process, and you've looked at data center issues. And as the chairman stated correctly, we're a little bit different. We have a different context because we're closer to some residential units. We're directly abutting, and actually, from this diagram, you can see we've got a little finger of land that actually wraps around the National Cemetery. So we border them on three sides of our property. So they're one of our closest neighbors and certainly one of the most important neighbors we have to take into consideration when we did the site planning for, for the campus, because the site plan has to be driven by the context of our neighborhood and, and where we sit in that, because, um, we are in industrial use. We have big buildings. We have big facilities, and we will have impacts on our neighbors. So it's our job to take our neighborhood into context and try and minimize those impacts on our adjacent properties. So I thought, just a quick view, um, you all have seen this, but perhaps for the benefit of the folks that, uh, have come to, to see this tonight, you know, certainly on our north side, we've got our neighbors at Mountain Brook Estates, and then around the National Cemetery, across the street from National Cemetery is the town's, uh, power station, power substation and their operational headquarters. And then a little further down the way, as you go towards the railroad, we have an existing Dominion power substation. Uh, there's the double railroad tracks that separate our area of town from downtown and the historic districts, two tracks, Norfolk Southern. Uh, there's regular service by Amtrak and then regular freight service by Norfolk Southern. The National Cemetery has two components. Uh, our site is tip, the site that we're adjacent to is commonly called the Annex, and then you have the original cemetery that was formed shortly after the end of the Civil War. A lot of history there and, uh, you know, certainly special place, and we feel the same way about the Annex, uh, location. Very important to us. To our south, we have the Peterson Data Center Campus. The railroad, you know, keeps wrapping down and heads, heads towards twenty-nine. Um, we have the, his, South Street Historic District is to our west, and then the uses transition, and the one spot there is the junkyard, the car junkyard on the other side of the tracks. On the other side of McDevitt, there is the other data center campuses that currently exist. You have the Equinix Data Center Campus. There's five data centers in that campus. Uh, Cloud HQ, which has been approved by the county, is a major data center campus that's planned and, uh, in motion now, and, uh, we have the Peterson, and then there's the Swift Data Center, which is within the town limit. So the town has had exposure over the years to data centers. We have one in town, and, uh, all of our neighbors, we have a lot of neighbors that are data centers and pending data centers. So I thought it'd be helpful just to show a few quick images of what our neighborhood looks like. So this is a view looking towards our site from, uh, the railroad station downtown. You can see where the town has the new parking lot that's under construction, and you can see a little bit of the current National Cemetery, the original National Cemetery, but it's hard to see at all the, the Annex property. It's quite a distance away, and there's quite a bit of vegetation. We see the tracks curve around, and that goes to our intersection here with, uh, East Chandler. So this is looking down East Chandler towards the Annex property. On the left, you can see the existing, uh, Dominion substation, and there's overhead lines on both sides of East Chandler, uh, going down all the way to McDevitt. This is looking down towards the South Street Historic District is on the right. This is the tracks, the two parallel tracks. There's one, uh, historic house there on the left, but as you go down this corridor, it's heavily vegetated on both sides, uh, mature trees. This is a little bit further down. It gets very dense, and then this is a view right where, uh, kind of our property ends, and on the right-hand side, you see the, the junkyard over there. Uh, this is at that same location where, uh, East Chandler crosses railroad tracks. This is one of the control boxes for the, the crossing and everything. And I took this picture just to show, um, looking back towards town, can we see anything in town? Because we're also sensitive to what the appearance would be to downtown. It's hard to see. This is looking straight at downtown, you know, eye level. Got out of the car, took that picture looking that way. Then I turned the other way, looking at the National Cemetery site. Again, heavily vegetated, existing along East Chandler. There's also vegetation that runs along our property line, uh, to the Mitchell property, and, uh, again, heavily vegetated today. This is the main entrance to the Annex property. Um, this is looking out towards the original National Cemetery. Um, there's some nice existing evergreen vegetation there, but again, looking towards downtown, cannot see anything really in downtown. We can see the significant existing overhead electrical infrastructure. It's, major lines are running, you know, down East Chandler, but those have been there a very, very long time. This is in the National Cemetery Annex. The cemetery has like a loop road that goes around, so when you come in at the main entrance, there's a little area where you pull off and you can locate graves. Then you come up to the top of the hill, and there's a little shade structure where people gather for the funeral cemeteries, and you keep coming around, and there's a flag, what they call the flagpole circle. It's the highest point in the cemetery. So it's a very important point when you're looking at views and the view shed. So took some pictures from this location. So this is looking back from that, that high point of, of the cemetery towards downtown, and you can, we can know that's the direction because that's the big telecom tower, which is the biggest thing in, for quite a ways in this area. And then you can see the mountains off to the west. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a nice view, uh, and it's, and it makes it a special place. This is also in flag, the flagpole circle, and this is looking north towards Electric Avenue, and you have this vegetated area, uh, screening the town's substation. Uh, you can still see a little bit of the overhead electrical transmission, uh, distribution system, but all the, the equipment, the transformers, the switch gears, you can't see them. Uh, it's very effective. The current buffer is very, very effective. This is right at the entrance. You get a little bit better view of that, that landscape buffering around the town's substation. And then I went back to East Chandler. So this is East Chandler, uh, just before, this is looking to the west, and that's, uh, Kings Brook Drive, the entrance into, uh, Mountain Brook Estates. And you can see on the left is our subject property. We have our existing, uh, Dominion overhead transmission towers that are run, and then a hundred-foot wide easement, uh, basically parallel to East Chandler. And then on the right-hand side, you can see there's, uh, a lot of overhead electrical lines, a little bit lower in scale, but, uh, a few more lines than ours on that side. And this is my attempt at a panoramic shot in the entrance of, uh, of Mountain Brook looking towards our site, and it's, we're almost lined up right on that one trans- transmission pole. Uh, but you can see the grades go up. We don't have a lot of existing vegetation today along that property, uh, part of our property, but the grades do go up. We have a, we have a rolling site. Our site is not flat. It is hilly, and in a lot of spots, it's higher than most of our neighbors. So, uh, that's an important thing to keep in mind. This is now looking down East Chandler, uh, heading to the west. There's a little more vegetation. East Chandler has some roll to it. There's a little bit of roll in the road. This is getting closer to the National Cemetery. We actually have a few nice trees on our side that act as a buffer. On the right-hand side is the undeveloped property that I think at one time was planned for, uh, residential, was zoned for some townhouses at one point in time. Um, and you can see the road dips down. The low point is where there's a, a stream crossing, and that crossing goes into Mountain Brook, and it comes from our site in that direction. And then this is going up the hill as we're going to the secondary entrance to the National Cemetery. Um, they have security fencing around it. They have their Dominion Towers crossing through their property. Uh, they don't have any buffering along the fence line, you know, separated from East Chandler, so it's in plain view of East Chandler. So when we started working on this, again, thinking of neighborhood context, we had three major issues that we wanted to address when we were doing our site planning. Uh, number one was re- respect the solemnity, solemnity, and the setting of the US National Cemetery. Very important to us. Number two is to provide suitable setbacks and proper buffering to our neighborhood, our neighbors at Mountain Brook Estates. Number three, an issue that impacts both locations, is to address the noise issue in a comprehensive manner. So I'd like to talk about each of those kind of one at a time. Um, you know, first and foremost to us is the National Cemetery. We, we wrap around them on three sides. Uh, it is a very special place. Um, you know, it, it's a priority in our, on our site planning, and we have spent a lot of time in our work session, initial work session we had with the Planning Commission. We heard loud and clear, that is a priority issue for you, and, you know, we have addressed it. So from our original concept plan, uh, we deleted two buildings, reduced the size of our project to give us enough flexibility in our concept plan to move some of the buildings around. We moved buildings further to the east. We were able to move some of the things to the south. We also reevaluated our substation site, made it smaller, pulled it away from the cemetery. And then also at that work session, our first work session we had, we talked about the importance of grading, and how do we, uh, provide you with adequate cross-sections so you can see what the views would look like with the final grading. And that's important to us too, as developers of the site. We need to know how to grade it, have the proper drainage, have sufficient stormwater management, but most importantly, be able to give you accurate cross-sections. Um, we're not proffering the grading plan. That comes with final engineering, but it's going to be pretty close to this concept because data centers are huge buildings. They're flat, and it's, it's like grading an aircraft carrier on the hilly site. We will move a lot of dirt to flatten it out, but the advantage that we have is by reducing the size of the project and kind of consolidating it, moving it further to the east, we're basically creating a flat platform that we're pushing down a bit, so that allows us some more room on the edges to build up berms to have for screening, and it helps reduce the relative height of these buildings. They are big. They are seventy feet tall with parapets. So, you know, we're not hiding that these are not big buildings, but that's what data centers are today. That's, that's what's constructed. So this was the first site plan we brought in during the work session. We had eight buildings, and you can see the substation was about twelve acres. We have the hundred-foot buffer around, uh, the two sides of the National Cemetery. The little finger of land is not buildable for us, so it's, it'll stay as a buffer in its current condition. We have no plans for that, but from the overlay, the technology overlay, we're required to have at least a hundred-foot buffer and setback. So even in our first edition of the plan, uh, we exceeded that, but we thought we could do better. We heard the, the comments of the Planning Commission. Uh, I met with the director at the cemetery, talked with her a bit, and, uh, you know, just get some context on the, on the cemetery, and we went back to the drawing board and came up with our current plan, which reduces the number of buildings, pushes things to the, to the east, as I said. You can see we've squared off and reduced the size of the substation. We did a grading plan. We also had our engineers do, uh, a stormwater management preliminary analysis to make sure our stormwater management basins are properly sized, and we did an associated grading plan with it. When, when you do site plans on a preliminary basis, that's usually where people go wrong, is they don't do the grading, or they don't allow enough room for stormwater management. They come back and say, well, you need to move things. We need more room for stormwater management. We did that upfront to make sure we're, that would work, so we're very confident that that's sufficient areas for, for our stormwater management. So that's our plan. Um, we have in our proffers a phasing plan. We anticipate building the two largest buildings on our south first, but in that phase, we'll also mass grade the site. It's gonna be a lot of earthwork. You do that once at the beginning, grade everything out so that the future sections are ready just to construct the buildings. And as Andrew pointed out, when we do- And as Andrew pointed out, when we do that, we're also going to put in all of our buffer planting in the first phase. Excuse me. This is our grading plan. And hard to see unless you're an engineer, but all along the, the south and the west side for the east side of the, of the National Cemetery, we have a berm. And we're going to plant that with a minimum of a double row of evergreen trees. And, you know, Jeff's suggestion in one of the work sessions, we're going to use a diverse menu of, of evergreen trees in there just so in case there's a pest infestation or something like that, we can make sure that it's not devastated and wiped out. That was good, you know, good comment. And we've incorporated that into one of our proffers. So you can see this is, this is how it grades out. And then we use this to create our cross-sections. This is just a little closer view. One of the things I wanted to point out in the miss is this is on our conceptual plan. So there's a dotted line north of the substation that wraps around. That is our proffered minimum setback for buildings. So we don't have an exact dimension on it. It's, it's scaled with the plan. But we cannot go any closer by proffer to the National Cemetery with any of our buildings or development. And you can see it greatly exceeds the minimum 100-foot buffer that the town imposed when they did the technology zone overlay. As Andrew pointed out, we have a road coming off of East Chandler. It's a secondary road. It's for emergency access only for the data center campus. And it's intended to serve as access, every day-to-day access for Dominion Power to operate the, the substation yard. Not a lot of traffic anticipated on that. Certainly, hopefully, not a lot of traffic for emergency access from our site. So when we did the grading plan and we came back to the work session, we did 10 cross-sections because we want to make sure we covered all the key areas for both the National Cemetery and then our neighbors on the other side of East Chandler. So there's five cross-sections that we did for the National Cemetery. I don't want to go through every one of them. We went through them in great detail at our work session. But I would like to focus on at least two of them that I think are very important and would be helpful to the public to understand, you know, the level of detail and commitment we have to, you know, screening from the National Cemetery. So this exhibit's also useful, excuse me, in that it shows the distances from various points on the National Cemetery site to our buildings. And as Andrew mentioned, the closest building from like on the west side of our, our property line with National Cemetery is about 900 feet to what we call building number five. That's about as close as we'll be. A little further, you know, from different parts. So when we did our cross-sections, you know, the two I want to talk about next is at Flagpole Circle because that's the highest point on the National Cemetery site. So if you're going to see anything from that site, that's where you're going to see it from. The other site that's important to look at is when you come in the main entrance and you come down, there's like a little shade structure where the funeral processions usually, you know, are organized and begin. And it's also next to the new columbaria area. That's kind of a gathering place. A lot of people that go to the cemetery are there for a bit. We wanted to make sure that we screened the electrical substation. Most of the equipment, electrical substations, about 20 feet tall. There are bigger lines coming in that feed and drop in, like we saw on the picture, going into the town substation. But we wanted to make sure we have a view through there to make sure we're screening, screening that. So from that little enclosure area, the shade structure area, it's about 500 feet to the edge of our substation. And closer, if you walk past the columbaria, almost to the property line, there's a little service lane that goes there. It's about 250 feet before you get to the substation. And today, if you look on the north side, there's a burial area, you can see there where I have got the 250. From the, from the very edge of that to the town substation, it's about 250 feet. So we're, we're no closer with our substation to burial areas than, than exists out there today. So these are the two cross-sections, number seven. I know this is a little hard to read, but again, we, we looked at this during our work session. You know, the short story is, looking from the Flagpole area, we show our screening trees. And we show them at initial height of planting, which will be six to eight feet tall. And most of the varieties of these type of evergreens will grow to 35, 30, 35 feet tall. So we show at initial planting and then at maturity. And you can see in number seven, which is at Flagpole Hill, Flagpole Circle, as that tree that's closest to the property line grows, it changes the sight line. And over time, you will not see anything on our site. Similarly, when we looked at cross-section 10, which is looking at our substation, it's even a better condition. From day one, because we have room from our property line to install a berm and we're able in our grading to depress the area of the substation, we can hide the 20-foot-high equipment from day one with our, with our landscape screening. So, you know, that, that was a good solution there in our, our grading plan. We then had our architect, who's helping us with our building designs, do a series of renderings of what the plantings will look like over time. So this is Flagpole Circle today, you know, looking at our site. This is with, I skipped phase two. This is with phase one. So in phase one, you can see on the right, the large buildings. Those are the two buildings that are closest to the Peterson Campus. Those would be built. And in this phase, we show the initial planting of the evergreen berm. The red box on the right is the existing maintenance center at the cemetery. In phase two, we build the next row of buildings, you know, progressing from south to north. And the vegetated buffer is getting bigger. And by phase three, when the two buildings that are closest to the National Cemetery and to East Chandler are built, that buffer is hopefully mature and it's virtually totally screened in that direction. At our work session, we also talked, I presented some information just about the use of vegetated buffers. I'll go through this quickly. Again, showed pictures of how it works today at the town substation. It's very effective. And then in this picture, you can also see, that's the type of equipment we would have in our substation also. There's a lot of stuff, but it's not that tall. About 20 feet is the tallest of, of that, you know, the equipment, the switchgear and the transformers. And then again, this is the view from Flagpole Circle, looking at that. It's, it's effective. It works. It works very well. We also took some drone pictures of, at the National Cemetery, because they have a maintenance building, a maintenance barn, and then kind of a, a back house area. And they screen it today with vegetation. So if you look, that's the new columbaria in the top picture. And behind it, there's a, a screening of trees and evergreens there. And the next picture below, that's what they're screening. And you can't see through it today. So it works today for the National Cemetery. It's also, you know, the, the maintenance building that's out there today helps screen things. And that's the view from our site, looking at the back of house there at the National Cemetery. So that's, that's how we've dealt with National Cemetery. So the next priority for us was Mountain Brook Estates. So what do we do to help reduce impacts to Mountain Brook Estates? Today, we have a hundred-foot-wide Dominion Power easement. We can't do anything in there. It's open space. We've talked to Dominion about the possibility of doing grading or planting in there and it's a no-go. They want to keep it just wide open. We're fine. It's their easement. But we've also agreed to add another 100 feet of buffer along and aside that Dominion Power easement. So from our property line going into the site, we'll have a minimum of 200 feet of setback. And the 100-foot that's ours to manage, we will vegetate and just start to build up some screening. So again, this is a little more zoom in on that detail. You can see the Dominion easement. We've got a little bit of property between that easement and our property line along East Chandler. It's about 30 feet wide on the, on the east end. And it gets up to about 50, 60 feet when we get over to the boundary with the National Cemetery. We want to vegetate that for a couple of reasons. One, it's close to East Chandler. It's close to the existing homes. And, you know, when you're screening something, if I can get something big closer to you, that really is more effective with screening because then you have to look up higher. And that, that works, that works much better for us. These are the cross-sections. These are four of the cross-sections we cut on East Chandler, looking to the south at our site. There's the, the Association of Social Workers Building there, the office building. That's to the east of Mountain Brook. That building is about 820 feet from, from our closest building, our building number six. And then at the intersection with Kingsbrook Drive to our building six, it's about 450 feet in that location. And then we cut another section from, like from about the fourth house in on the left-hand side just to show how the impact would impact the houses that are further into the subdivision. That house is about 675 feet away. And then if you're just driving down East Chandler to building five, we're about 400 feet away.
Sorry, Steve, is that, those are cross-sections one, two, and three?
Those are cross-sections one, two, and three.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So this is just an aerial view of this area. This is, again, very important area for us. The association building there on the right, Mountain Brook on the left there. And just note, also thing to point out is, topographically, the intersection with East Chandler is the high point. The grades in that subdivision drop down. And where that tree line is, that's over on the top-left area, there's a little, that's a little stream that keeps going from our site, heads into Mountain Brook. So that's a low point. So the grades are dropping down. So the houses, as you go further into the subdivision, are lower than right at, at the intersection. There's also an existing row of trees behind most of the houses on the left-hand side as you come in. It's pretty heavily wooded. This is the closest house here on the left-hand side as you're coming in. And there's also a little drainage course that goes behind these homes that tie, also ties into that little stream. It's vegetated there also. And then this is just a drone picture of how that vegetation keeps going around. It's a mix. It's mostly deciduous. There's some evergreens in there, but it's mostly deciduous. So we cut, I'll just look at two, the two cross-sections. Number two is the one that's right at the intersection at the closest house. And, and we, we drew the section, the, the line of sight, we drew it from the second floor. So if somebody's on the second floor of the house or, you know, looking out the window, we didn't go to the ground, you know, that's 10 more feet up in the air that we'd look, just to be conservative. And what it tells us is, during the initial, initial phases of the project, and even at the ultimate build-out, you will see probably the top portion of the closest building, you know, buildings five and six. You're going to see the tops, very tip tops of those. But we'll have a buffer that'll, that'll grow, you know, and reduce the impact of that as best we can. And then similarly, with the cross-section for the house that's further down, even though the topography's going down, the building's pretty big. It's, you know, 450 feet from, from East Chandler. So even with the mature trees, we're still going to see a little bit of the top of the building. And that's just the reality of it. Sir?
Do you mind me interrupting with questions?
No, absolutely.
On the previous slide, so the part that's visible, is that reasonably accurate scale? It's like about a third of the building height?
It's about, it's about 15 feet.
20 feet, 15 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And those are drawn 70 feet tall.
Yeah, okay.
So, and then again, we asked our architect to do, you know, a rendering of what it looks like. So this is what it looks like today. There's the Dominion Power Pole that's on our site. It kind of lines up right with the middle of that intersection. This is when we do phase one. Can't see any buildings because we're doing the two buildings that are furthest to the south, next to the Peterson property. They're, they're quite a ways away. But we are grading the site and we are putting the landscape, landscaping it on top of the berm. Then in phase two, you start to see a little bit of the top of the middle two sets of buildings. We, you do see a little bit of that. And then in phase three, you see a little bit more with the buildings that are closer, about 15 feet or so. But you're also looking through, you know, a mature evergreen screen. So that's how we address our friends at, at Mountain Brook Estates. So the third one, and Andrew talked about this a bit, was noise. Data centers make noise. No argument about that. It's, we are in industrial use. We are data centers. Any industrial operation is going to make noise. Bingham and Taylor, they make noise. The railroad, when it comes rolling through, and the freight trains come rolling through, they make noise. We're not denying that. But our job is to, you know, do the best job we can with the noise. So, you know, as Andrew said, we looked at all the, all the different standards for noise in the surrounding counties, Loudon, Fairfax, Prince William, Caroline, Front Royal. And we looked at what all those, their noise standards are. And we meet or exceed their noise standards. And we have a noise standard for the day and a noise standard for the night. And we need to have a clear standard so that when we do our final engineering design of our data centers, we have a value to work towards and we can get our sound engineers to work with our architects and mechanical engineers to size and specify the equipment to meet those noise standards. And the practical matter is, we also know that we've always got section 13, that we can't be a nuisance. And it doesn't behoove us to be a nuisance. You can ask any serious data center operator, what is the one thing that they don't want to have? Is they don't want to have noise complaints. So we are very focused on noise and, you know, mitigating that. We have done enough research today. We have noise consultants on our team. We have our architect. We have mechanical engineers. And we've actually also talked to companies that provide noise suppression equipment and showed them our plans, showed them our initial designs from our architect and said, please do an initial evaluation. Tell us that we can meet these noise standards. And they're telling us, yes. So we're comfortable enough to commit to these noise standards. Hopefully, we can exceed them. But we need a value to, to live with. And when we do the final design, we have to do a noise study. If, if we, if our noise study says we don't meet our standards, the, our site plan won't get approved. That's going to be a condition of approval of the site plan. So, you know, we're, we're committing to that. We know that's our goal and that's what we have to hit. We've also committed to screening any rooftop equipment. We don't know today exactly how much rooftop equipment there's going to have, we're going to have. There are several different ways to cool data centers. They generate a lot of heat. There's different ways to cool them. There are some ground-mounted coolers. There are roof-mounted coolers. We're not there yet. We know the range and we're comfortable that we can make it work. We have emergency generators. We know that. Emergency generators can go inside the building or they can go outside the building. There are, there are examples of both. And part of it depends on who our end user is and what their specifications are. Some of the ones we've seen in Loudon, a lot of them have outside generator yards. To be conservative, we've assumed the worst case. And we've shown the site plan to accommodate these outside generator yards. The other thing that we've done in our layout is assuming that we're going to have outside generator yards. We've put them behind the buildings. We've oriented the buildings east-west. So you have your emergency generator yards on the south side. So those, the buildings themselves contribute to noise mitigation for that. There's also different ways of mitigating the noise from emergency generators. You know, without going into a whole detail, you can contain them. You can get modular units where they're basically contained, almost like in a shipping container, reduces the sound. You can put screening and baffling panels around them. So there's ways to mitigate it. But you have, we have to do a comprehensive design because you have to consider what the background noise is today, what we're the background noise is today, what we're adding, and then how do we mitigate it? And that's going to depend on the final design of the heights, where the generator yards are, what equipment we specify. Data centers make noise in several ways. Air handling units, emergency generators, and the substations also make some noise. When we do our noise study, we're also going to analyze the substation. That'll be in phase one. In phase one, we have to build the substation. So we're concerned about the noise for that, too. Certain frequencies are sometimes generated by transformers in substations. But there are ways to screen it. Having a berm helps, but if you, if we saw in Loudon, there are certain substations where you can install perimeter fences and noise absorption panels to hit those frequencies. So there's a way, way to address it. And again, we're comfortable committing to these high levels of noise control because we've, we've done our homework with our consultants and we're happy, you know, and comfortable committing to that.
Am I right to understand you, you're, you're planning for the worst possible scenario? You're describing potential discretionary elective mitigation, noise mitigation measures that various users may or may not adopt.
Exactly.
But your, your plan is based on somebody, not a discourteous, let's say, operator or a, one that is relatively indifferent and is going to put their machi, their machinery outside and not use mitigation measures. So you're planning conservatively?
Absolutely.
You're planning for the, you're hoping for the best, planning for the worst?
Absolutely. But, but in that context, we, we are proffering very specific noise standards. Our noise standards are lower than in the county.
No, no, I get that.
Where there's a couple, there's one data center campus today, another major one planned across the street.
Right.
We're going to have lower standards than that.
Right. You're planning conservatively, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to follow along with, with what, what Ian was saying. I think technology changes every day and what the data centers that were built years ago certainly are a lot, probably a lot louder than ones that are coming along now. And as things progress, I think you, you're going to be finding ways to, to mitigate the sound and so, you know, I, I agree that there's a lot that you can do now, but even a year from now, there might be something else and...
Absolutely. And before, before we started on this, I didn't know much about data centers and I've been learning an awful lot. I mean, there's incredible stuff going on because these are very complicated mechanical and electrical systems. They're always looking for ways to refine it. Microsoft is doing experiments where the server, you know, that you have these big banks of servers that throw off all the heat. They're looking at methods where you can immerse the servers in a solution to dissipate the heat. In the, in the early data centers, they would use water cooling and they have these huge cooling towers to reduce the heat. They're now looking at server boards with small piping systems where they actually run water across the, the boards to cool them. So, I mean, it's, it's evolving all the time. In two years, who knows what's coming next? But, you know, for us to, to meet our, our responsibility of the neighborhood, we have to have a standard to live with. And we've tried to be, you know, aggressive and give you guys the best standard that we can that's reasonable in the industry. And, and truly, data center operators are, it's not a fly-by-night business. A typical data center, when it's all kitted out, you're getting close to a billion dollars. So this is serious, it's a very serious business. You know, they've got, you know, serious, you know, backup systems, on pon backup systems. And, you know, there was a question about, you know, Mr. Cerio asked about running different fuel types. I've learned a bunch about that. Why do we use diesel? There's a number of reasons why we use diesel. It's, one of the big reasons is if you're going to, say, use a natural gas system to feed all of your, to feed all your emergency generators, then you're relying on another utility to back you up. When the whole purpose of having emergency generators, when the grid fails, that's the only time we're running the emergency generators for extended periods, is when the electrical grid goes down. Well, if the electrical grid goes down, what if the, the natural gas network goes down at the same time? We're in big trouble. So diesel is, is, is the most commonly used fuel. It's very stable over long periods. It has a very high energy factor. And one of the things with the generators is when the power goes out, you have batteries that back you up for seconds. But then you need your generators to fire up very quickly. And yes, natural gas generators, it's an alternative fuel. There's, there's less pollutants, still pollutants because it's a fossil fuel, but it doesn't spin up fast enough to get, to cover your battery period. So that's one of the reasons.
Let me talk to you about that later.
Absolutely, absolutely. But that's, that's, that's what our, our experts are telling us. The reason why you see, you know, diesel in all the emergency generators up at all the data center campuses. It's very rare that there's an alternative fuel. But it's, it's an evolving industry. Who knows what's coming next? But using what we know now, that's why we put the generators behind the buildings. And that's what drove the site plan, to orient the building that way, these ways, so that if our generator yards are outside, it helps us when we do our noise, noise mitigation. Next in our proffers...
Mr., sorry, Steve?
Sure.
First, Steve, I suppose Mr. Plesko is more appropriate in the setting. Why does the proffer vary from the, in terms of day duration, time duration and exceptions? Why does it vary from local ordinance?
It's an industry standard and it seems to be in all the codes around that people are a little more tolerant of noise during the day than they are at night when they're sleeping.
But it, that's clear, but it, the town statute, as I said with, in discussion with Mr. Hopwell before, seven AM to eight PM, proffer seven AM to 10 PM. Mr. Hopwell has explained that that's not, that it's the town ordinance that controls, so the variance is not significant. But why does it, just curious, why does it vary?
I, I don't have a good answer for that. We can, we can look into that and if, if it makes sense to make it align with that, let us, let us get back and we'll make that part of the, what we present to council.
Curious, yeah.
Yeah. Now, we were, again, when we were looking at all the different standards from the surrounding communities, that, you know, kind of...
Somehow that crept in there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for, you know, being patient. Lot to cover, but I just want to try and, you know, give you, give you all, all the rundown on what we're doing. Andrew mentioned the visual aspects. So because we have buildings that are close to the National Cemetery and close to our neighbors, and frankly, you will see parts of it from East Chandler, we're very conscious of the aesthetic impact. So these are self-imposed architectural regulations in ourselves. Early data centers were just big old boxes, plain concrete boxes, nothing fancy, no ornamentation. As more of them proliferate, you know, to meet all of our needs for AI, computing, you know, phones, everything, we're going to see more of them. So, you know, we felt it's our responsibility to put some architectural guidelines on ourselves. And so we've proffered that all of our buildings will at least have a couple of these items. So it's not just a uniform vanilla box. Change the height up. Put some setbacks and some, you know, fenestration on the front so it doesn't read as a flat surface. Because they're big buildings, you know? Change the facade materials, change textures, change colors, use sculptural elements. So this next image is, you know, example that one of, one of the projects of one of our architects did. This is not exactly what we're going to build. We don't know yet. But this is just to give you an illustration of what you can do with a data center to make it look a little bit more attractive. Adding some glass, adding some color, adding, you know, this, this has all of our kind of elements that, you know, so this is an example of what can be done.
And the point being that because it's proffered, whoever the construction, whoever builds the buildings is enjoying to put something, maybe, maybe not as shown here, but include some variation.
Yes.
Some aesthetic variation.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're not an out-of-town developer. I'm here in Culpeper. Jim, our owner, lives in Middleburg. We're, we consider ourselves local. This isn't the first project we've done in Culpeper. So, you know, we care about what this is going to look like. We may not be the end people to develop it. We're not data center developers normally. We're normally residential guys. But we have a level of commitment to the community that if we transition, or if we get a joint venture partner, or whoever does this in the end, they need to respect these things. And the only way we can do it is put it in the proffers because that locks it in. Same with the site plan elements. We need to document the setbacks. We need to document how many buildings and what the square footage is. Because if we're not around to do it, at least we've got it bracketed and you know what you're going to get. That's very important. It's important to us. It's important to me. I, you know, I live here, my business is here. I want to see this built, but I want, I want to be able to go buy it and be, you know, proud of it to say, you know, we did right by the community. And leads into the next slide, which is, that's why we're doing it. We need to proffer it to lock in this stuff. Lock in how we do the site plan, lock in how many buildings, how it's laid out. This is the phasing plan. I'll run through this real quick. Like we said, the two big buildings in the south would go in first. We would masquerade the site. Our main entrance is off McDevitt. There's already an existing crossover there. Green Meadow Way, which is the little stub-street that comes off of that. When the residential projects were rezoned, that was designed. And the right-of-way for the piece of Green Meadow that's in the county was already dedicated to the county who dedicated it over to BDOT. It's in place today. It's locked in. And then the piece that's on our property that's in the town boundary, that's already been dedicated to the town. That right-of-way is exist, it's locked in. That's where we're going for our entrance. Secondary entrance off East Chandler should be minimal traffic off of there. But in the first phase, masquerade the site, build the substation, first two buildings, put in all the perimeter buffers. We put in all of our stormwater management. Second phase, two more buildings. Third phase, the last two buildings. Andrew went through the proffers. I won't go through those again unless there's questions on that. But, you know, it's not only just the site constraints that we have to take into consideration when we're considering impacts. We have impacts on the town as a whole, so that's why we have some cash proffers. So, again, appreciate your patience. I know it's a long presentation. Hopefully, we've expressed that we're very cognizant of our neighborhood. Our design is context-driven and we think we've done a pretty good job of trying to meet all of your input and what we think is important, you know, particularly in the National Cemetery, particularly our neighbors across the street, and then the noise issues. So hopefully, we've addressed it. Happy to answer any questions or...
May I just confirm that paragraph eleven of the proffer is new? It's a new item and I'll just, I'd like to read, it's just two sentences, I'd like to read it out loud. "The intentional discharge of fuel, oil solvents, antifreeze, chemical pollutants, hazardous material, or flammable substance onto the project grounds or into project stormwater piping or sanitary sewer piping is prohibited. The above-mentioned materials, if used at the project site, will be stored or disposed of in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations." That wasn't in the first proffer?
No.
That's an addition?
That's an addition. We went back and, and again, you know, we looked at some proffers from some other projects. We looked at the ones that were done in the county. And again, trying to be comprehensive and try and hit all the issues that we think are of concern to the community. So that was one we've added. So the same reason why we added the architectural, we thought that's very important for the community to have that, so. Look forward to hearing from the public and then any other questions you have, happy to answer when ready.
There's, I'm sorry, the original, the, the first, the April twenty-seventh, I think, concept with eight buildings?
Mm-hmm.
What was the square footage of that? The building's square footage, if you remember?
I did. Two million, three sixty.
Okay, so you've, you've dropped by a little more than...
Almost four hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay. No other, no questions for the applicant. Let's proceed then. I'm not sure, is there a system for determining order?
We can work off of the sign-in sheet for those who signed in.
If you mind. So we'll go through the sign-in sheet. As you approach this stage or the podium, please, as I asked, requested before, introduce yourself, state your, like, where you live. And generally, the, the guideline is three minutes per individual and four minutes if you're representing an organization, generally speaking. Oh.
You can just sign on the top one there. I'll grab that in a second. So our first, our first, if you'd like to read, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Parmally?
Do you want to let some of the council, I'm just supposed to be the first one here, so I can go first?
That's fine.
But I'm happy to go later.
We'll let you do, we'll let you do cleanup. All right. We'll let you back cleanup. Jim Treppen?
Yes, Mr. Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sure there are more people in the room than have signed up. If you want to...
I'll go first because it's a bedtime.
Please, okay, that, please, please. But if you, if you do have something to say to the hearing, please come and sign up within the next few minutes.
Sign out there on the next...
Yeah. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Bree West. She's going to be shy. Bree West, I live on seven-ten East Piedmont Street in the town of Culpeper. I wish I'd prepared remarks, but I came.
Oh, I remember your name. You're one of our correspondents.
Yeah, I sent written comments, but I just figured I'd show up and say the same thing. I think it is, it's too much, it's too fast and the scale, I'm having a hard time processing just from a megawatts perspective, from a square footage perspective. I've followed closely what's happening in Loudon and I have thought to myself, while I intellectually understand what my, you know, friends in Loudon are going through, thank goodness, I, I'm not living it. And now I'm having a weird sense that I might be living it soon. And I, I do think that the backup generators are a huge issue. I don't think anybody takes it seriously. I don't, DEQ is not going to require anything. The town doesn't seem to be ready to require anything. There's no one who's going to require best available control technologies and that's scary to me. And I don't trust the industry. I'm sorry, I just don't trust that the innovation is going to make it work out. I know lots of places where it's not working out. And then I, I just think as a neighbor perspective, if, if we cared about that cemetery, this would not be a two-story proposal. And, and so I'm just, I'm troubled by that. I don't live next to it. This is not about me personally. But I just, I, I don't get it. So anyways, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Bill Benner?
I, I don't have any comments. I'm just here to listen.
Thank you for...
That means it fast.
Thank you for, yeah, that was within three minutes, yeah. Thank you for joining, for attending. Susan Kinsley?
I'll still listen.
Ray, Ray Kinsley? Ah, okay.
Good evening. Ray Kinsley, Mountain Brook Estates.
You're also one of our correspondents.
Yes, yes, yes.
You wrote in, yeah, yeah. And you're, well, you both wrote in, as I recall.
We did, we did.
Thank you.
Thanks. To her. Like, like the previous speaker, we're really concerned about the, the view at the cemetery and the view at Mountain Brook Estates, particularly coming up that hill, coming up Kingsbrook. It's going to be right in our face. I'm not sure evergreens are going to grow, at least in the Piedmont area, to a height that's going to screen those buildings enough so that we don't see them. And that's a huge concern. They're going to just be these big monolithic monsters on, on probably the highest point within the town that, that's going to dominate the view. And, and I really think that Culpeper would be doing itself a great disfavor by, by allowing this construction to continue. I really think Culpeper would do itself a really, really great benefit by zoning that, leaving it residential. And, you know, it's a high point. There, there, that's high land. There's got to be great views up there. There's got to be great views up there. Put some, put some houses up there. Let people enjoy that view. Not these monolithic windowless behemoths up there that are going to generate noise. Who's going to validate the, the noise study? Are we setting money aside to, to do an independent noise study? Not just banking on what they're going to, you know, give us? We, we need to do it ourselves and, and validate it. So, those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, uh, your comments and your input. We really appreciate it. Thanks to both of you for joining us today. I, forgive me if I don't say this quite right. Uh, I think it's Lori Medley?
Hello, um, Lori Medley. I live in 14706 Gunston Hall Place in Culpeper. I am currently the-
Speaking of disruptive noise.
I am the commander of the American Legion here in Culpeper. As such, I interact with veterans on a daily basis. Most recently, over the past weekend, there was a state convention of the American Legion. People approached me about this, other veterans, that are very concerned throughout the whole state of this impact to the Culpeper National Cemetery. They've heard about it. They are very concerned about it. I actually have a letter from, um, Senator Bryce Reeves, State Senator Bryce Reeves. And I'll just read it really quickly to you. To Councilwoman Taylor and members of the commission. It has been brought to my attention by several constituents that the planning commission is taking into consideration a number of data centers surrounding the esteemed Culpeper National Cemetery. Although I am not looking to overstep my bounds and understand that zoning is an entirely local decision, I would be remiss if I did not express my opinion as a citizen of our Commonwealth. The need for development is inevitable. And I understand that data centers provide the potential for a boon of tax revenue to any given locality. But I hope that you will all take into serious consideration the hollowed ground that proposed sites would surround. The town of Culpeper and the surrounding county are home to a wealth of historical treasures, one of which being the Culpeper National Cemetery. The National Cemetery serves as the final resting place for thousands of men and women who made the difficult decision to risk their life and limb in the name of this great nation of ours and should be a place of serenity and contemplation. Since it is still in active use to this day, I would oppress upon the commission that grieving families deserve the opportunity to visit their loved ones in peace. As I mentioned above, this should not be taken as an attempt to sway the commission from their rightful duty. I would only ask that the commission take into careful consideration the historical and contemporary value that the National Cemetery has to offer while mulling over their decision. Yours in service, Senator Bryce Reeves. And I'll give you guys a copy of this if you want it. And so I'm not representing the members of the, the American Legion at this point, although at our, our August meeting, we do plan on coming to a resolution or some posi- official position of the American Legion on this. So I'm speaking as Lori Medley's citizen now. I hope that you've all had gone and seen the data centers. What they're talking about is not a version of SWIFT. I have friends that live in Loudon County who have been promised that these data centers are going to reduce their tax rates when in fact their taxes have gone up over time. It has not reduced their, uh, taxes one bit. And all these buffering seem like a great decision. But at some point, all of these trees become just a green wall. So you're surrounding the cemetery with a green wall, which is a better view shed than a data center, I give you. But it's not a better view shed than residential as this area is currently zoned for residential development. The other concern I have is the IT equipment, um, has basically a five-year life. So there's major concerns of how they're going to dispose of all this equipment. Is it going to go in our landfills? Just exactly what's going to happen to this stuff every five years as they tear out all these giant servers? And as the technology, that has been acknowledged, evolves, it's going to change and things are going to have to be swapped out frequently. So I guess, you know, my final comment is, you heard it several years ago, the co- popular, popular phrase was just say no. So please just say no to this rezoning request. Leave it residential. Let the character of Culpeper remain as what it is, a rural community with great views of the mountains and rolling hills, et cetera. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your service. And thank you for-
Thank you.
Your representation. And thank you for joining us and bringing this information. Stephen Combs?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, director. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, my name is Stephen Combs. I'm the chief deputy commissioner of the Virginia Department of Veteran Services. I'm a resident of Hanover County, but our offices are in downtown Richmond. I drove up from Richmond today to be with you. Uh, I'm here to support the views of our veterans' community. Uh, our commissioner, Dan Gate, asked me to be here to, uh, express to you that we share the concerns of the veterans' community here in Culpeper and the community related to the noise and the view sheds from the cemeteries, um, and that we share their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking before us today.
You're in favor or against?
We are here to support the veterans' community and-
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yep. Sir, um, we share the concerns of the veterans' community related to the noise and the view sheds from the cemetery. And, uh, and we share their concerns. We support their concerns. And would ask that the planning commission, um, take into account all of the concerns expressed here tonight in the many letters that you received from the veterans' community, specifically as it relates to the Culpeper National Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Charlene Spolin? Am I saying that right?
Yes, Spolin.
Spolin.
Charlene Spolin. I live on Blue Ridge Avenue. My question's about noise. Can I turn this way to the person who has the answer?
You should address, uh, address us, yeah.
What exactly generates noise in the data center? Around the data center?
Um, I, so I don't want to be, um, uh-
Or sound.
I want to oblige you, but this is a, the purpose of this hearing is for you to give us information.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, so, uh, if you can come and see the department member during business hours, uh, you can, my phone number's on the site. You're welcome. Give me a call and I'll, I'll walk you through it. But this isn't the setting for us to-
Do, but we do have an answer to that issue. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, in fact, uh, well, Mr. Puskow, you want to just recapitulate that?
I'll talk to him.
Okay. Uh, we'll have the applicant back up. And he's, he, I think he summarized it before, but we could, he will be happy to summarize it again, I believe.
Okay. That was my question.
Thank you for joining us today and for your input. Um, Ms. Spolin is the last person on my list. Is there anybody else who, uh, we're- Oh. Excuse me, I'm so sorry, Sarah. Oh, uh, Mr. Uh, uh, Kinsley.
Kinsley, I just wanted to- Just wanted to make it clear, I am not anti-data center in Culpeper at all. I'm anti-dater, anti-data center in the town. Put them all out on the highway. Put them all out on 29 where the noise and the traffic is already. Keep it all out there. They've got Marilat down the street. Put it all out there. Leave it nice and quiet residential in the town.
You said exactly that in your letter.
I did.
Thank you.
And I mean it. I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, again. Um, Ms. Parmally? Uh, Parm- am I saying that right? Parmally?
Parm- yeah.
Parmally.
Oh, we're, say it.
Nice to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you too. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Sarah Parmally. I am here representing the Piedmont Environmental Council, even though I am a Culpeper resident. PEC recommends that, uh, you reject this rezoning for the following reasons. The town is unprepared to effectively protect its citizens from the impacts of large-scale data centers. This industry has been brought here through thoughtless and inappropriate incentivization. And this development will permanently harm an irreplaceable cultural and spiritual community resource. Sitting in this room, looking at these plans, we cannot fathom the impact that this rezoning will have because Culpeper has never seen data center development at this scale. Equinix is one story tall and over half a mile away from the nearest house. Copper Ridge will be 70 feet plus tall. It will be 2.2 million square feet and within 500 feet of people's homes in the National Cemetery. The impacts of this project will be significant, unmitigab- unmitigated and permanent. We are also concerned that the town is woefully unprepared to be able to regulate, um, one of the most powerful and moneyed industries in the world. Loudon, Fairfax, and Prince William have complaints associated with data centers that have had, um, you know, that have required very costly enforcement actions. These governments have dozens of employees in zoning and enforcement and better monitoring equipment and larger budget, budgets for litigation, yet their residents are still impacted by unresolved issues from data centers. How can Culpeper hope to do better with less staff and fewer financial resources? We also question the wisdom of subsidizing this sort of development next to a highly sensitive area without having a clear plan to protect it from the known impacts of the data center industry. The Culpeper National Cemetery is a sacred and solemn place. And yet the only protection it has from this sort of industrial development is a 100-foot buffer in the Technology Zone Tax Incentive Program, which does not prevent development within 100 feet of the cemetery, but declines to give it a tax break. Hey, this protection was also added on a whim when the Technology Zone was updated last year. It was not included in the 2019, uh, Technology Zone incentive. If Culpeper truly cares about this resource and what it means to the people who live here, whose family members are buried here and who hope one day to be buried here themselves, why is it subsidizing industrial development at this location? This rezoning is inappropriate. The concessions made by the developer indicate as much. If you need further proof of this, I would recommend you go to Ramblin Court in Aldi. Go to Chilum Place in Ashburn. Go to Round Table Place in Sterling and stand within 100 feet of a two-story data center and see if that is something that you would like to live next to. Please listen to the concerns that have already been voiced either in public court on dense or in person and reject this rezoning. Thank you.
May I, uh-
Of course.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Do you, is there, um, documentation of the kind of, of cases, say, in Fairfax or Loudon that are being brought in under, you know, in litigation now?
Yeah. There, there definitely are. I would be happy to provide examples of it. You can also find, um, several examples in local reporting, of conflicts between residential areas and data centers, um, especially in terms of noise variation. It takes a, or of, um, nuisance noise complaints. Even The Atlantic actually did a, a, a long article on, uh, noise issues in Chandler, Arizona. So this is a universal data center issue.
So if we were to ask you, you could pull together-
Absolutely.
Uh, independent sources of information?
I would be happy to.
Uh, also, what was the-
Are you asking her, too?
Not, not now.
Okay.
I, thank you. I'm sorry for my ambiguity there. You said stand in front of where?
So, uh, you know, if we don't have any two-story data centers-
What was the name of the location?
Yeah, um, I would be happy to give you the names of the locations.
No, just one. You specified one in particular.
Yeah, there's Ramblin Court and, uh, and Aldi.
Is that in Fairfax or in Aldi?
Uh, that is in Loudon. These are all in Loudon.
Do you happen to know, uh, what this noise ordinance, uh, allow, the standards are in those counties?
I don't know them off the top of my head, but I can provide them for you.
Easy enough to look up. We can look them up ourselves. I just wondered. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Did you have anything else, Dan? Thank you for speaking before us today, Ms. Parmally. Okay. Uh, once again, is there anybody else to speak? Then, uh, as I outlined at the beginning of the meeting, the applicant will have a chance to respond on a fact basis to queries and concerns, uh, from, uh, expressed by the public in the hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the public, for, for coming tonight and providing feedback. It's very important. This is a big project. And, uh, you know, people need to be concerned, we all need to be concerned about a number of issues. This is an industrial project. It is, it will have ramifications. But, as I said earlier in my presentation, that is our job to try and do the best job we can to mitigate them. Mitigate our, our impacts on our neighbors. And, as I said at the very beginning of our presentation, our number one site planning issue that we've taken head-on is the National Cemetery. We have provided buffers well in excess of the 100-foot buffer that was in, uh, the Technology Overlay District Regulations. And as you saw in one of the exhibits, our closest building is 900 feet away. It's nine times what the town included in, uh, in the regulation. Uh, I, if that isn't being responsive and respectful of, of the National Cemetery, I don't know what is. I don't know if, um, some people weren't paying attention during, during the presentation, but it is proffered.
Re- please, uh, repeat that again. The closest building to the cemetery?
As shown on our conceptual site plan. 900 feet from the west side of-
The substation is, the, is, the-
Substation's about 250 feet.
But it's not. It's a, it's a different, it's a difference of kind relative to the actual buildings, which are very tall.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Substation equipment generally 20 feet tall. That's one of the reasons why we put the substation on the southern border with our property line with, with the National Cemetery. That's our biggest border with them. Because if you look at our western border, if you take out the area, if you can go back to just a plan that shows National Cemetery.
Mr. Chairman, we're covering the same thing you covered earlier.
Sure.
Do we need to re-
No, I, I just said that's specific. The 900 feet is, is, this, I just wanted to repeat that one point. It's 900 feet.
Do you have it? Can we have him answer any-
Yeah.
Anything that came up during the public comments?
Yes, Mr. Sir. It's true. Completely correct.
We can leave that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well done. Yeah.
Ms. Medley made a, a comment about trees becoming a green wall. The north view of the National Cemetery today is a green wall. The view to the east is of the mountains. The mountains, I'm sorry, to the west is the mountains. We're not blocking the view of the mountains. We are trying to buffer our buildings the best we can. And vegetated screening is used commonly in Culpeper. commonly in Culpeper, and we think it's environmentally sound way to do the screening. I don't know how else to screen. We've moved the buildings back. There was another comment about the five-year life of data center equipment. Yes, that is common in the industry. Servers are turned over quite rapidly. Do they load up all the servers and take them to the dump? No. Number one, you have to wipe a server of all its data, since a lot of information is proprietary. Almost every data center has contracts with companies that specialize in processing servers. They take them to their facility, they wipe them clean, and most of them will either try to repurpose or reuse them, or they'll take them apart and recycle them the best they can. There's also movement in the industry to try and create what they call a circular path for electrical equipment. Data centers aren't the only things that generate electrical waste. TVs, refrigerators, washing machines, we have a lot of electrical waste in this country. So there's many of the industry groups, Microsoft's a leader in trying to create what they call circular path for servers, where their goal by 2030 is to have like a hundred percent recyclability of all their electronic equipment. They have a big facility in Boynton, and it's one of their circular centers that's kind of a test center. So, no, we just don't take them and drop them off at the dump. Question about noise? Yes, data centers make noise in several ways. The electrical substation has transformers. Some of those hum at certain frequencies. When we do our noise study, as I said before, we include the substation noise in the noise study. If we find that the noise is exceeding our property line, because when you do the noise study, you analyze the source, the distance to the receiving people, which is at your property line, which would be the cemetery or the residences. We do the calculations. If the noise level looks like it's too high, then we come up with mitigation measures: berms, plantings, screen, physical screening. We have to meet the standard. We don't ignore it. Same with the buildings. Buildings, typical noise generation is how you cool the buildings. The trend now in the industry is to use air coolers. A lot of them are mounted on roofs. So how do you mitigate that noise? They're fan units. They make noise. How they're exhausted, but there are ways of mitigating the noise for them. And that's, that's part of the analysis that we do in the noise study. Emergency generators make noise. You have to cycle them about once a month for a period of time to make sure that they still work. If you've got a home generator, you should be doing that, too, to make sure it works. This is at a bigger scale. And will they run all at one time? The only time they run at one time is if the power grid goes out and fails. That's what they're there for.
Even then, they're subject to the standards of the ordinance, the town ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay, in that worst-case scenario.
If it's the worst-case scenario, we're having, we're having a blackout of the city and the town and the county in that situation.
Were there any other concerns you wanted to address from that?
Um, you know, respectfully, Ms. Parmley, I guess I have more confidence in, in the town to manage their affairs and to regulate things. I think we're a pretty capable community, so I, I don't have your fears about town a couple, Culpeper being able to manage
Address the commission and not other members of the public.
Apologies. That's it.
Mr. Mitchell, did you have a question?
The first speaker, Ms. West, you
Mr. Plasko.
Sorry, Mr. Plasko. First speaker spoke to
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were addressing another member. Go ahead.
Best available controls not being used, and she was specifically referencing the diesel generators. It seems that you know more about diesel generators there. What are the controls? Any idea what she was speaking to, because she's not here to elaborate on that?
I'm not exactly sure. As I was starting to talk with Mr. Siriow, there's a reason that the industry typically uses diesel generators. The fuel is more stable, it's less volatile, as opposed to having a pressurized gas line next to, you know, billion-dollar facilities, which could rupture, or that supply could be interrupted. So diesel's a more stable fuel, it's got a higher power content, it helps the generator spin up faster, so that when you have a failure in the grid and you have to go immediately on batteries, you can only go on batteries for so long, and then you have to go over to your generator. So that's the logic of why we use diesel generators. The diesel generators typically will hold forty-eight hours of fuel. They usually have them in what they call belly tanks, which are underneath the generators. So it's not like we have a big tank farm. They're underneath the generators. That's common industry practice. The tanks that hold the fuel are double-walled tanks. They're instrumented so that in the void space between the two tanks, if there's a leak, it sets off an alarm. And the, the emergency generators, the fuel storage is regulated by Virginia DEQ and the EPA. The emissions from the generators are regulated by DEQ. As a town, we don't regulate air pollution. You know, that's a regional, state, federal issue. And to the one point Ms. Parmley was making, yes, we don't have a staff to regulate air pollution in the town. That's something as taxpayers, we pay for the state and our federal government to do, because it's a, it's a bigger-scale problem. So, hope I answered that question.
Could I answer? Could I carry on? I believe that diesels are the most expensive and the dirtiest way to provide electrical generation. There are many other ways you can do it. As a point of interest, I was a design engineer in, for General Electric, for eleven years in power generation. Worked on gas turbines, nuclear power plants, solar power, and several things. It's my opinion now. Doesn't mean that, doesn't mean I'm right. It's my opinion.
And no argument. There are different ways of doing it, and the industry is, is evolving. And again, you know, full disclosure, I'm learning a lot about data centers, too, and I'm trying to present, you know, what I think is the worst case, and then in our planning and in our proffering, let's try and protect the community from the worst case. You know, prepare for the worst, hope for the best, is kind of our approach. But, you know, we do have to, you know, realize it's a manufacturing process, and there are reasons that, that it's done, and it's, there's economies, and, you know, no argument. There, I'm an engineer, too. There's better ways to do a lot of things.
Gotcha, sure.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to address?
No, I'd just like to thank everybody that came out, and, you know, truly, you know, one of the things that is part of this process is when we walk in the door the first day with a concept plan, we're not locked in stone. We truly try and listen. We come to the meetings open-minded. We do want to hear what you have to say. We do listen to what the public says, and if there's a legitimate issue, we want to hear about it.
You have made a lot of changes.
We have, we have, and we're not afraid to do that, because, yes, it reduces the value of the project and reduces the scale of it, but, again, we're trying to do the right thing by the town. We're, we're not fly-by-night developers from out of town. You know, we're local. We live, I live here in the county, Jim's just up the road, and, you know, that's part of our responsibility and charge to you, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
May I make a, about a two-minute comment?
If it's, sure.
Yeah, I just
Your name, please.
My name is Jim Treptow. I am the managing partner of the property owner. I'm the majority owner as well. I want to actually look around, look in the eyes of the folks that have had concerns and expressed those tonight.
So will you please, I must ask that you address the commission?
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. I've lived in northern Virginia for forty years. I've lived in Fauquier County for forty years. I've owned several properties in Fauquier County. I've personally put twelve hundred acres of property in Seneca East with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation during that period of time. I say it only because I want you to know that environmental concerns, viewshed concerns, noise concerns, twilight concerns are paramount on my mind. I bought this property knowing that it was zoned residential. Stephen and I together rezoned and developed the Laurel Park Project, which is under construction right now on 29th. We did so with a great deal of input from Andrew and his staff, the Planning Commission, which voted unanimously to recommend that project to the council, and the council that voted almost unanimously to approve it. We intend to do this project exactly the same way. If there are things that mature over the next six years, which is the phasing for this plan, the power will be phased to this site. It won't be immediately available for the full six buildings. But we intend to grade the site as if it's going to be totally built out. We intend to plant out the site from day one so that it can mature over the period of time. I just, it's important for you to know that this is a, a personal challenge to me to make sure that this project is not like the references that have been made in other parts of the state. There are other jurisdictions have not been as sensitive to the issues as Culpeper is. I would not have done a project like I said, done in Loudon County in Culpeper. Trust me, I would not have done it. I have a proffered, fully-zoned site there for five hundred active adult homes. So I, I'm not doing this for any other reason than I believe this is the highest and best use for the property that was intended by your elected officials. The overlay was put into effect nine days after I closed on this land. And I came to Andrew and I asked him if, well, I investigated what that meant. And over the last six months, I've, Stephen and I and a team of consultants have done a very deep dive into the development of what we have planned here. A very deep dive. Any innuendo by Ms. Parmley and the PEC suggesting that there's any comparative status as between what's done in the examples that she gave and what we have planned here is inappropriate, number one. And important for you to understand is that we've gone, in our, in my opinion, way beyond what we're required to do because we're proffering these things, which put permanently in place with the rezoning, the obligation of my company or anyone that would succeed me in the ownership or venture of that site to do exactly the same thing. So, thank you very much. It's been a very interesting seven-month period. I've learned a lot, but I, you know, want you to know that I'm, I'm out in the open. I'm not hiding behind anybody in terms of my personal obligation to fulfill this, this site plan. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Simpson, you have a question?
So if this was approved by, recommended for approval and approved by the town council, when would you start pushing dirt? And do you have a customer?
The answer is no, we do not have a customer. We have five active prospects for a large joint venture partner, two of whom have a bevy of customers, active and looking for other sites, and three, I'm not at that stage of negotiation yet. We would, but we, we, we know what our limitations are, and we wouldn't do this without a major player as a venture partner. As far as pushing dirt is concerned, it's probably, I mean, just in the very best of cases, going from rezoning to town council approval for the rezoning. My guess is Andrew could probably answer it better, but twelve to fifteen months for final site plan approval, something like that. Took us eleven, twelve months on Laurel Park, which was pretty straightforward residential, three-hundred-and-ten-unit
Right.
project. So I would say twelve to fifteen months.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask either of you or Mr. Plasko, a couple, just a couple of other small questions unless
If it's technical, ask him. If it's general, I'm happy to take a swing at it.
Well, this is segues off of what you were just discussing with Mr. Flanagan. At one point, Mr. Plasko said, if I, if memory serves, said, "We're not a nuisance operator." And then at another point, he referred to the end user. Is it, or do you care to say, do you expect to be the operator?
No, we would not expect to be the operator. We would expect to be a venture partner where we contributed our land and we did those things that we're capable of doing, which principally would stop at the mass grading stage.
Well, when Mr. Plasko says, "We're not a nuisance operator," and I have seen every evidence of good faith, I have, from the applicant's side, so I'm not challenging that in any way or shape or form, but that doesn't bind the end user. The end user could conceivably be a nuisance operator, or is, are there safeguards?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure I know what the definition of a nuisance operator truly is, but
Good point, yeah.
You know, honestly, so it would be hypothetical for me to respond.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
What is a nuisance operator?
I don't know.
You used the phrase.
Well, I, but truly, let's think about the pieces of the puzzle. I mean, you know, not to belabor it, but this is a highly regulated industry.
The focus of my question is, you're not the end user, and so
Correct.
we don't know exactly how that user is going to behave, whether they're community-friendly or whether they're community-indifferent. We just don't know. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Thank you.
Thus the importance of the proffers to lock in everything we can.
Absolutely, absolutely. And as I said, I see every sign of good faith, particularly this paragraph eleven, I don't even remember discussing it at the last meeting about waste disposal, and there it is. You've evidently been reading the correspondence and responding, in a pre-spawning, we might say.
Absolutely.
What, there's some superstructure on the buildings above the seventy, above the roof. Is that correct?
Sometimes, sometimes there is
Just a few words about the visibility of that?
Sure. Sometimes the buildings will have parapets. That's typically not counted in the building height, but it depends if there's equipment on the, on the roof, which may or may not occur. We don't know yet.
Or it may be recessed from the viewshed portion of the building.
The backside of the building, yeah.
It might be only the backside, so.
In the worst case, granted the worst case, we're preparing for the worst, hoping for the best. Good point. Let's see, what would be the height, the additional height of whatever antennas, coolers, whatever superstructure is above there?
I'd probably have to ask Andrew what, what the ultimate, ultimate limit is.
So up to the limit, whatever the ultimate
I mean, that, if that's the worst case, correct?
In the press, I've seen the county limit is ninety-five feet.
No, no, no. I, I don't think it even approaches that. I think it's somewhere in the twelve-to-fifteen-foot range.
Okay, all right, okay. And at the last meeting, the June 29th meeting, we talked a little bit about the basis for estimating the height of the trees at maturity. Did we get clarity on that?
I've spoken to several horticulturists
Okay.
and about some of the plant species, and, you know, to your, to your point about looking for diversity and
No, I saw that as well, yeah.
He recommended several, several species. There's a green giant species of evergreen that is more blight and disease-resistant that he recommended.
But the cross-sections show trees of a certain size, but that's not proffered. It's just do the best we can. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I just want to understand.
... growth rate of a eight-year final build-out of the last building. So
Where did that thirty-five-foot figure come from?
Three to five feet a year growth for eight years gets you to its maximum.
For a particular species? What's
Yeah, for several different species of
But again, that comes in when we do the first site plan. Part of the, the plan that's submitted is a buffer plan, which is reviewed and approved by town staff.
But is the height
We proffered a minimum
Is the height of the barrier proffered?
The, the buffer plan is proffered. We have to submit a buffer plan with our first set of site plans. Town staff reviews and approves it. If we come in and, and specify a plant that only grows four feet high, I hope Andrew rejects it, you know, because that wouldn't be our intent.
And smack you around a little bit.
A little bit would be appropriate.
One, one thing, let me just add this, though. Don't get too much into the weeds.
Can you come up to the mic?
Oh, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. We, we've discovered during the work that Bowman has been doing for our grading plan that we may still have a couple hundred thousand cubic yards of dirt on the site based upon our last grading plan. And that may allow us to build, and we, I can't guarantee anything right now, but it may allow us to build larger berms so that we begin our planning at a higher visual height. And I was driving through Leesburg on the way back from Maryland this past weekend, and I noticed a residential development there on the left-hand side on fifteen, and they have, their berms now are up to fifteen feet high to begin with. So one of the concerns about the sheer green wall right up next So, one of the concerns about the, the sheer green wall right up next to a roadway might be able to be mitigated by a larger berm starting the planting, sloping longer and higher. And we've got a number of locations, especially the second group of planning that is planned up against the buildings from the view from the National Cemetery. And so, I've only discovered this in the last few days and will do another plan that maybe shows a more robust way of berming and allowing for these trees to be at 10 or 12 or 15 feet at its root base rather than at, you know, four or five or six feet with a smaller berm. So, no guarantees.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just thinking.
Applicant has had ample time to respond to some of the concerns presented by the public. Is there, among those of you who've spoke previously, is there any new information that you'd wish to present? New information, not, or not, not saying again what you've said before, but, all right. All right, very good. Mr. Flanagan?
Could Mr. Kinsley please return?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you say you live in Mountain View Estates?
I do.
How annoying is the generator for the town when they do peak shaving?
We can hear it. It's not that noisy though, but it certainly
About how far away do you think you are?
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile?
Yeah.
1,300 feet?
Something like that.
And the, the generator exhaust at that particular building goes towards East Chandler Street? And it shoots, I've, I've been there and it shoots, you know, it's kind of, they have a building and it just shoots into there and then it, yeah, it's very annoying when you're, you're up close to it or in the town and power office. I was just curious how annoying it was at your home.
It, it's not that, not that annoying. It really isn't.
Is it equivalent to your heat pump coming on?
Can't hear my heat pump. I have a great machine.
I want your machine. Thank you very much.
Are there any question, other questions from the commission for members of the public? I will close the, do I need a motion? Public hearing is closed. And thank you again, each and every one of you, for attending today and for your interest engagement.
Mr. Chairman? If I may, there are a couple of questions that were raised that I think most appropriate to answer by staff.
Please, please.
The question had arisen in terms of maximum permitted height above the height limit. The town actually doesn't have a maximum there. There are certain things that are permitted to go there, which includes heating and air conditioning equipment that would be included in there. There is the caveat, though, that no more than one-third of the roof space may be occupied with this. So, essentially, if they needed to cover the entire roof with this equipment, then the entirety of it would need to stay below that 70-foot threshold. They also did have a proffer in there in terms of screening of the equipment that they did have up on there from the National Cemetery and from East Chandler Street. So, that's there. The other point that I wanted to make, Mr. Kinsley raised the question about who would be reviewing the noise study. This is a, it's a very serious matter and I don't consider myself an expert in, by any means in that. And so, we certainly would be reaching out to a neutral third-party expert on this matter to do it. In previous cases, applicants have provided the funding for that. I want a complete neutrality on this and no funding from them on that. And so, it would be funded by the town in that instance. Because as Ms. Parmally rightly said, the town really would not be equipped to get into a lengthy battle or enforcement issue with this. So, that study is going to be the key component in ensuring compliance with the noise ordinance, both in terms of the proffers and with Chapter 13. My goal on that is to use that and to, to hold that stringently to, for the applicant to demonstrate their compliance. Because if we get into the stage where we're having noise complaints, everybody has lost. The neighbors have lost because they're, they're hearing too much noise. The town has lost because of the, what that legal battle would entail with an ultimate user there. So, you know, Ms. Parmally is, is very accurate in saying that was, that's my biggest concern with these users coming in. But the problem is, until we get to that stage in the process, there's not enough information for an acoustic study or a noise study to be an effective tool for us to ascertain what those impacts are going to be. So, this gives us essentially a, a measure to stop the process before they're constructed, before there's that level of investment from the end users if they're not able to show that appropriate mitigation. So, should council approve this, that is going to be a key aspect of, sort of next step in the development process of review to ensure that the impacts of this proposed development are mitigated for the community. So, again, as, as from staff's perspective, I wanted to, to, to share that, that should this go forward, we see that as a, a key moment in review to try and ensure that this project does not adversely impact its neighbors.
Very good. Any other points?
Not that I had, that I, that I felt were unanswered questions, but happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Mr. Flanagan?
Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Hopebowl, so if this is rezoned M2, it'll always have to be a data center?
Well, the applicant has proffered conformity to this conceptual development plan. So, should they wish to change to some other M2 use, unless they can fit it into this configuration, they will have to come back for a proffer amendment, which is again, a public hearing process.
So, what I hear you saying is, this is what we may be buying into. But if it turns out that it's a no-go and they want to do something different, they have to come back and basically go through the process again.
Correct. Again, assuming that they're not able to use this, what's layout and what's shown on the development plan. If they need to modify or substantially change from that plan, they will need to go through a, a public hearing process to do a proffer amendment.
Can they ever, ever go back to residential?
They could certainly request to rezone for residential. As we looked at the analysis from the comprehensive plan, as the comprehensive plan is currently crafted, I don't think there would be, short of those, those minor references to residential within the character district area, the same language that largely seems to support the transition of this to industrial development would essentially serve to oppose the transition of it to strictly residential development.
Thank you.
Other questions for the department? Related to Mr. Flanagan's question, I was just going to ask you. Point four in the proffer says, "Development of the site shall be in general conformance with the submitted conceptual zoning plan, uh, development plan. Section, paragraph five, minor adjustments shall be allowed based on final engineering design and as acceptable to the town zoning of the minister." So, in my reading, that's an unusual binding to the concept plan in the proffer, that it's going to very closely adhere to this.
I, I wouldn't say that's an unusual binding. I think that's a fairly standard commitment, obviously.
So, it means that, it, I'm sorry to mean interrupt you.
No, just, again, when they get into that final engineering, final design of it, things may have to shift slight, shift slightly in it. And, and so, it's essentially left to the discretion of the town in the form of, of myself or whoever's in the role of zoning administrator to say how, to essentially make the determination of
Is that reasonable?
Correct.
Does it still within the town protection standards?
Correct. Is it what, what town council ultimately approved?
Other questions for the department? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Flanagan?
One more question, Mr. Hopebowl. The, the tax incentives, how did that come about?
As was referenced, and, and Ms. Taylor certainly also speak to this, I believe, from town council's perspective. But as was previously drafted, the county had a number of technology zones that were, were identified, including some that essentially overlaid this portion of the town. The town did not have its own independent technology zone identified. So, essentially, what it did was offered the, the incentive and the rebates from the county ones, but there was nothing, they were still subject to the same town taxes as, as they would be under any normal situation. Essentially by, and so, it, it served to somewhat, I think, serve as a deterrent or deflate the benefit of the technology zone over that portion. Because while they were getting the break on the, the county side, they weren't getting any break on the town side. So, essentially, it serves as a deterrent in that regard. So, is my understanding was economic development, the town's economic development office and, and the town manager worked with the county to, to come up with an agreement whereby the county would remit some portion of the taxes received in return for the town essentially waiving all of its taxes in that regard in those areas within the technology zone. So, essentially, the effect for the developer would be that the technology zone properties within the town were equivalent to those that were outside of the town boundaries.
What's the incentive for the town to do that?
That if we were to see technology zone development occur there, that the tax revenues coming in would be significant to the town over the zeros that essentially are being collected currently.
An additional tax base?
Correct.
Significant?
Again, we, we wish to be cautious in terms of, of assuming any revenues. The numbers that, that have been preliminary considered would be fairly significant if full build-out did occur. But I think that the, the prudent decision here is to look at this more from a land use, certainly for the planning commission, to look at it from a land use decision basis rather than based on financial considerations.
True, but the technology zone is how we got here.
Correct.
So, that, that's the impetus that got us to this. So, that's why I wanted to know how that came about.
So, I'll kick off discussion. I, a little less sanguine than the directors about the, the comprehensive plans, sort of, not sure the right word, brushing off residential use of that area. I note that the discussion in the comprehensive plan of Growth Area 3 says specifically guidelines for mixed-use business districts should apply to this area. And as is noted, mixed-use business districts specify, bear with me. I'm obviously having trouble finding the right page, but it specifies discretion to mix business with residential development, mixed business with residential development. And in fact, that idea is reinforced in at least one of the objectives of the comprehensive plan, balance land use and promote mixed use. On the other hand, it's a fact that that land has been zoned residential for 17 years. There was a conceptual plan for 55-plus development there. And the implication, the inference I draw from its lying fallow for 17 years is that nobody's been able to figure out how to make that work. Logistically, it's too difficult. I understand from talking with town officials that the road access is extremely difficult and that the terrain, the hilliness of the terrain militates against that sort of development. So, I'm, I don't feel that the comprehensive plan steers us away from that kind of development. On the contrary, I feel the comprehensive plan militates in favor of more mixed use over the, over the totality of this tract. But the logistically experienced, the implication of the town's experience is that's, that's an unlikely dimension of direction, dimension of development, direction of development. And I bring that up partly for our purposes, but also it's, it addresses some of the, some of the issues that have been brought forward by the public, not only here this evening, but in the correspondence that, that's, that we've received. Why isn't this area being developed as a residential area? This is not the best use for it. And one of the criteria we need to decline this rezoning is that, to demonstrate there is viable alternative economic use for, for this tract. Any other discussion?
No, I, I agree with you on that, just having been, my first stint on the planning commission was, was some close to 20 years ago. And I, I remember well the Copper Ridge Residential Project and its challenges. And, and yeah, there's a lot of reasons that it's not an ideal location for residential development and certainly economically as well. It, it would not serve the community as well as, as this data center proposal would. And looking at safety and convenience, 500 houses out there trying to get into town, those were some of the challenges, just, just the traffic nightmare that, that would, would come from that. So, so I agree with what you're saying about probably many of the reasons it hasn't been developed residentially.
Other discussion?
In addition to that, we've been talking about a technology zone way back then. And so, to finally have it, you know, it's always been pegged for that area. We have it there. Things have developed nearby over the last many years. So, it's a logical spot for something like this.
I, a little chagrin to be the only one speaking, but I, I will say my personal reservation about the, the rezoning is less the, and I want to say, I think we all agree that the cemetery is, is hallowed ground. It's sacred from a spiritual point of view because it represents the end of life of many of our, our fellow residents, past, recent. And it's sacred from a secular point of view because of the service in which they engage. Many of them that there, came to that final resting place because they gave the ultimate, made the ultimate sacrifice. We all agree with, I, I feel safe saying that we all agree with that. There is a valid question as to whether the noise is, is actually an issue and whether the enclosure by trees on three sides is going, is, compromises the integrity of that space. Every sacred space has boundaries beyond which development occurs and life goes on. And the question is not so much, should there be a boundary or not be a boundary for the National Cemetery? But what is a reasonable boundary? And does this development represent an unreasonable transgression on what might otherwise be a reasonable boundary? So, that's a serious consideration. And I think we all take it seriously as we've been admonished to by members of the public. I also am not less concerned, however, and I, I can't figure out whether this is a peril or not, whether this is a risk or not. But I feel that it's very strongly, the town has a particular character that it's developed and nurtured with a great deal of effort over a long period of time. I think in some of the literature, the catchphrase is gateway to the, to the Blue Ridge. It's got a very nice character. I talk to people from all over the place who say, "Oh, Culpeper, I remember. The downtown is very nice. It's got a particular feel to it." And I don't understand the implication of the visual impact of this installation, not just from the cemetery, but from the town as well. Particularly the historical downtown. My deepest appreh, my apprehension as, as deep as that, on a par with that, that the cemetery might not be properly respected, is that the town's brand is somehow damaged by not having thought through completely enough what the visual impact will be. If we go ahead and rezone and we don't understand that and it turns out that from downtown you can see staggered, varied, but still data center rooftops, you know, the top sections of the buildings from the town, I think that will change the character of the town irreversibly to the detriment of the businesses that rely on tourism. So, that the revenue, the prospective revenue stream, that would, tax revenue stream that would come from the database operation would, you know, to some extent be on the backs of some of the businesses already in the town. I don't know if we've considered, for example, hearing from the Chamber of Commerce, their views on a development like this and the impact it might have. their views on a development like this and the impact it might have. And I may be, um, uh, afraid of ghosts here. It may be that there is no visual, uh, impact, but the cross-sections so far have all been from the cemetery. I haven't seen any analysis from the town perspective. Any thoughts on that?
I'll speak for a moment, just, uh, I'll piggyback on what was said before. Under the residential development that's currently approved there, I remember well when that was, um, initiated. And it's probably what got me here today is I railed against it because there was no connectivity to the town, that you were forcing people to the automobile to go shop on Downtown Davis, and yet it was so close. So I think that that development is somewhat, um, cloistered and remains that way. And I think that's part of the problem with that community is there's no connectivity and there's no real path. Maybe, uh, Mr. Hopewell could present something different. But looking at this piece of land and reinterpreting it, I think is an appropriate opportunity to say, how are we going to use this? That, those houses there? Off of that, I went to Loudon, as I told you guys some, uh, months ago, and saw data centers there along, uh, the, the, uh, bike path and just how massive they are and mostly not screened. This one is making initiatives to screen them, uh, in innovative ways. Mr. Hopewell won't be surprised. When I heard there's extra dirt, I started saying, you could put a skate park there. But there's, um, some thought that's gone into this. Uh, when I went to the circle, flagpole circle, it's, it's moving. I was there for an internment and not by intent, um, to be in the middle of people's grief in that moment. There was still mowing going on in the cemetery. And, you know, by my phone, it was saying that was like sixty-five, seventy decibels, and I'm a good two hundred feet away from them. But there's a service going on there. And you can't help but be moved when you're there, even if you don't think you're going to be moved, you will be. Looking off a flagpole circle, what intrigued me about this plan is that the view shed towards Chandler is largely uninterrupted, meaning that where the cows are in the trees, that remains, that whole drop-off into that valley and that tree berm stays. The equal part that goes along Chandler because of the Dominion's Right-of-Way remains. So that's sort of left side of my eye looking down the hill is still there. There's still that depth to sort of take in the gravitas of where you are and what you're looking at. You know, I have my concerns that I've expressed about the trees. Will they be big enough? Will the berms be big enough? Uh, will there be, you know, a moth, a blight or whatever that takes them out? And suddenly they're denuded and we're staring at these behemoths and the sum of all of our fears are realized. That gives me concern, you know, that we would have done this then in saying yes. But there's, um, a lot of thought on, on view shed and towards the neighbors across the way. I rode my bike through there. I rode up and back and I stopped, took pictures, um, got ticks, all sorts of fun. But, um, it's quiet there, um, at the lot line. I mean, my phone was reading thirty decibels when there wasn't traffic, sixty-five, seventy when there was. And I thought a lot about what Mr. Hopewell's done and brought a very low threshold to this, uh, and applied it. And a, a process for mitigation, you know, should there be, you know, ongoing noise. Last time we spoke, Mr. Flanagan talked about a chainsaw, uh, at a hundred and twenty decibels. But that's not a fixed implement. That's a one-off, a fixed influence there. You know, seventy decibels to the lot line. I found in town, I went to the Verizon Center where they have the cooling, uh, thing there by, it used to be Hale, now it's Cars Inc. That's putting out sixty-five decibels and it's right across the street, um, from residential. And I felt more comfortable with it at that point. I said, okay, that's sixty-five and it's twenty feet away from residence. So we have that sort of relationship there. So I guess in all my rambling, what I'm saying is there's a lot of sensitivity, but there's a lot in this plan that is working in a right direction to make sense. It's not perfect. I mean, I don't know what would be perfect there.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, Mr. Hopewell?
If I may make one observation, um, your comment related to the visibility of this from downtown, I don't believe it'll be vis- visible from the downtown itself. However, with the new pedestrian bridge that's being constructed over the tracks to the parking lot, I would anticipate that you would be able to see the structures from that. From up on the bridge.
That way. You can't turn around.
But you really can't, I mean, you really can't see.
It, it, the distance would be significant, but, but I think in terms of, of, I imagine the, it, it, that, that they would be visible.
What's the basis for your belief that it wouldn't be visible from town? I mean, do, I'm willing to be persuaded, but.
Well, es- essentially the, the, the depot building itself, the, the struct- the existing structures that are within there, if you were standing on Davis Street, if you're walking around town, potentially from some of the upper stories of, of the, the existing buildings there, you may be able to see it. But essentially for the visitors who are in the downtown area, walking around downtown, the existing structures largely are going to screen any visibility in that direction.
I agree with Andrew. Not only that, the new park and not being built, all those trees taken down, all you see is the cemetery. And that's the old part of the cemetery. The new part is even higher. So you're not going to see these buildings from the depot or, or, uh, Davis Street or any place like that. Again, not trying to, but you're not going to see it from town, from the tourist part of town.
I'd like to suggest, uh, at the last meeting I said that, um, after we got, we, um, if there are no further questions or comments, um, that after receiving, um, information and concerns at the public hearing, given the irreversibility, and this is a big project, um, a lot of land, um, and it's, it'll be irreversible if, once it's, the momentum starts going behind it, if it, if the rezoning is approved. I suggested that we might, uh, want to defer, uh, action until the, or at least have a, uh, the working meeting to just revisit and re- and make sure we reflected at mature length on the information that we've, that's been presented and brought to us. Uh, I still think that's a good idea. Um, it's not going to do material harm to the project. And in fact, the applicant, um, applicants themselves have said they, they're, they want this to be a good project and be thought, well thought through. So I think that's, I continually believe that's a good idea, that rather than acting this evening, we, uh, defer further action until the working meeting, which would be, um, on the twenty-seventh. Is that right?
It, it's, it's the discretion of the commission if they wish to do so. Given the interest in this case, I would recommend that the decision occur at a regular meeting though and not at a working meeting.
Occur to postpone. That would give, uh, ample time for public notice.
Public notice?
Just if, if other people wanted to participate.
Once you have the public notice, this is over with.
We're, we're having a hearing now.
We'd have to schedule a second or, or keep the meeting open.
You don't need a second public hearing.
I don't, I don't feel, I feel that amp representation. So.
This then puts, um, it puts a, I mean, delaying a, a decision on this to the next regular meeting puts it even further out for council's consideration. Where would it put it for that? And how, you know, how far, I mean, we're talking a lot further out than just this next meeting.
Well, essentially, i- if this were deferred and, and the commission were to act in August, the earliest it would be able to go to town council would be their September regular meeting.
And there's no issue with that? Long of a delay with, I mean?
They don't have a buyer yet anyway.
Well.
It's, it's not a, a buyer. We're not trying to sell it. We're trying to form a venture. And, uh, until it's rezoned so that we know what we're doing, that's our, that's our difficulty.
I think that was the, uh, yeah.
I think the biggest issue seems to be the noise issue. And that's, um, no- nothing, I mean, that's something that's going to be taken care of at site plan when they have to come up with, when they know more about the noise. So I don't, I'm not sure what more, by another month of ruminating, we're gonna, I don't know. That's just me.
Let me tell you, the other issue though is, uh, all the letters I've seen are related to the cemetery.
Sure.
And how it relates to the cemetery.
And, yeah.
Can I give you some information I found out? I did talk to the director of the cemetery. Uh, she said they have enough burial grounds right now to take them to twenty-sixty. Uh, and after that, they have five acres that they still own on the west side of the cemetery that they can expand to. Okay, so they have plenty of places to put people. And just to give you an interest, I'm, I'm American, I'm on American Legion. I'm in your post. But, uh, uh, my wife is buried there and she's in section eleven. Section eleven is about maybe ninety feet from that flagpole that you showed. And let me tell you, when I get buried with her, we'll be both looking at your buildings. Because there's no way you're gonna obstruct that.
I don't know how you're gonna do that.
Yeah, you will. We may not be looking.
Right. Well, in fairness, I understand the, the letters, um, a- and I think they've addressed, um, I don't know what more they can change other than nine hundred feet is three football fields, right? I mean.
From what I see from there, from that section, uh, it goes uphill and at the top of the hill you put, uh, trees there. I don't see anything. Uh, you're, you're gonna see a nice pond down at the bottom, a water treatment plant down at the bottom or whatever. But, uh, no, you're not gonna, it's, it's far enough away.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't know what more we're gonna, what, what we can ask.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, other issues that have come up in correspondence that haven't been specifically addressed are, um, potential air quality effects, uh, related to diesel operation. And that does go to the one, uh, of the, um, comprehensive plan objectives protecting air and water quality. Cemetery, which we've been discussing, goes to another, um, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, objective protecting historic areas and landmark integrity. There has been, I'm not sure how to deal with this one, but, you know, concerns about energy, the effect of additional demand on energy reliability, I think, the cost and reliability of energy supply to the township as a whole, the area as a whole. And I'm not qual- I don't feel qualified to, I, I don't understand, um, the dynamics of that is, uh, that we evolved an assessment like that, or I, I don't even really understand if it's within our purview. Although we do have a, an objective to protect, um, quality of life. So it's, it's, it just seems to me this is a decision of some gravity and there's no, the, the benefits of rushing into it are not apparent to me. But.
May I make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Um, I'm sorry. Do you mind if you?
If, if I may make a suggestion, um, i- if the applicant is willing to consider, um, a proffer amendment related to one comment that we did receive that I thought made a lot of sense, a proffer commitment for coordination of the maintenance cycling of the generators with the cemetery to ensure that you don't have the, the maintenance cycling of those occurring while ceremonies may be taking place there.
The kind of thoughtful, the kind of thoughtful reflection that I think, um, is, there's no harm in, uh, thinking it through a little bit more. I see no significant harm. What is the harm if the, I mean, the, the delay and the deferral by one month of council consideration?
I'm not sure that there is. I'm just.
May I make a motion?
Yes, I'm, I beg your pardon, Mr. Cereal, please.
An REZ thirty-nine fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. I'd like to move that we table this into our next regular meeting.
I second.
Any discussion? In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, are we meeting on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, I'd need to check when I get back, see where we're at with, uh, some of our site plans. I'll follow up with the commission and the chair.
I would say that we reviewed the, the schedule, but I think we probably spent enough time, uh, for one night. Everybody's probably a little tired right now. One final word of thanks to all of you for coming. Oh, you can't, you had trouble hearing us?
Can't see.
Oh, oh, I see.
You decide, I'll buy.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good idea.
We usually turn a little bit.
Thank you for speaking up. In that case, you know what comes next.
Motion for adjournment?
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.